Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Lake County Planning Commission meeting for November 17th, 2022 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounded strange.
Good morning, Commissioner Hess. I should have had you lead us as we had a little bit of delay. But thank you.
Good morning, colleagues and friends.
Nice to have you via Zoom.
Thanks.
Jim, do we have verification of legal notice on today's meeting?
Yes. I guess all matters have been legally served. Also, I can do a roll call real quick.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Field.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Chair Price.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have two items that we can just go ahead and approve. The first one is consideration of the adoption of Assembly Bill 361, findings authorizing teleconference meeting during a state of emergency. And then 4B is approval of the October 27th, 2022 Planning Commission minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and...
Second?
A second. Jim, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Hess.
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chair Price.
Yes.
And Commissioner Field.
And moving on before our first timed item is citizens' input. This is a time for any anyone from the public wishing to speak on anything that is not included on the agenda. You're welcome to approach the podium. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Joan Moss. Some of you know me better than others. I walk around the courthouse and gather information. And I want to, I just want to make a nice suggestion that some of the department heads and the planners and the were confused and upset because they don't understand the new website by the county on the first floor. And they would have appreciated a workshop because when the public comes and asks them questions, they have no way to answer because they cannot navigate the new website. So I'm, this is just concerns all of us. And I wanted to point out that it's possible that the first floor might conduct workshops about the new website. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, are there any hands in the Zoom room for citizens' input?
I did not see anybody.
Okay. Taking one last look around chambers, I don't see anybody wishing to speak. Let's see. Showing a time of 9:04. We will bring up our first timed item at 9:05. Showing a time now of 9:05, and we will bring up our first timed public hearing. This is a consideration of proposed use permit extension UPX 22-03 for use permit UP 91, excuse me, 93-16, previously use permit UP 92-8, and categorical exemption CE 22-41. Applicants: Geysers Power Company LLC, location 9010 Socrates Mine Road, Middletown, APN
Good morning, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is use permit UPX 2203 CE 21, or 2241. I would like to first make a correction. Oops. Thank you. Note a correction on page 910, paragraph 2, that the life of the project should be removed from the staff report.
Thank you. That will be noted.
Project description is that applicant Geysers Project Company or Power Company LLC proposed to continue an existing use of its use permit. There have been many use permits in this project, several that are listed in the staff report. This is a location aerial maps. The project is located in between Cobb Mountain and Lower Lake. And this is the site diagrams. Over to the right is the Calpine Unit 19 with all of the wells. And that photo, this diagram to the right shows the field steam wells. There are a couple of waterways that run through the site. One of them is Anderson Creek, I believe. And the topography that includes valleys and ridges, and the power plant sits on top of a ridge. Surrounding land uses also, excuse me, sorry.
I just wanted to interrupt her. I said it was between Cobb Mountain and Lower Lake. Is there a microphone? Is my...
I don't believe her mic is working, Sam.
Uh-uh.
Or if we could try it again.
Yeah, it's not working.
Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Hi.
Oh, there we are. We're all loud and live.
Maybe it wasn't close enough.
No, my question was about the location. In my head, I have it kind of more between Cobb Mountain and Middletown.
Middletown, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I'm in the right place.
And the project site, the project is in conformity with the general plan designation and the zoning designation. This is some of the steam fills at the site and the infrastructure. And under California Code Regulation Title 14, Division 6, Chapter 3, this project is exempt under CEWA common exemption because it is an extension on already existing use permit, and there's no new activities or additional, anything additional that's occurring. It does have one condition, A, that it will comply with the existing conditions of approval and the rest, and all of the use permits that were amended up till now. And the findings are included in the staff report that the project does comply with what's required in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the categorical exemption and approve the request for 30-year extension of time starting November 17, 2022, and ending November 17, 2052 for use, for the use permit extension UPX 2203. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301B of the CEWA and to approve the use permit extension UPX 22-03 with the findings and condition of approval A1 and previous conditions in effect under the amended UP 9316. And one thing I would like to note is we did get a condition that came in this morning regarding the roads, and I'm assuming that you all got copies of that condition.
I will confirm. Did you see that come through?
Yes, I did. And I wanted to know whether that was being addressed. The complaint was about the road.
So it wasn't a condition, it was a public comment?
It's a, it's a public comment, yeah, on the roads that we just got this morning. So I just got it just before the meeting.
Okay.
If it pleases the Commission, within the existing conditions of approval for this use permit, there is a condition that they will be responsible for any damage or deterioration that the company's operation may cause to the public roadways. So that is already currently within their conditions. Since we just received this email this morning, we can start looking into that.
Thank you. So that concludes your report.
That concludes.
Thank you so much. Does anyone on the Commission have any questions for staff before we open it up for public And Commissioner Hess?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you for asking.
Okay. We will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to have, any questions for staff or the Commission is welcome to approach the podium. You'll have three minutes. Jim, any hands in the Zoom room?
I see.
Okay. You're welcome to approach the podium. Just be sure to state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Joan Moss, public. I came across what's called a Casper. It's public record. It's on file. The people I asked about it couldn't find it because of the new website, but they assured me, a woman two weeks ago assured me it's on the public health, environmental health website. I have copies. The people participating included the state health department, the county health department, the CDC, environmental hazards. I have it here. You can have a copy of it. And what this study does in 2012, bring into question geothermal development itself. I hope that you can find it and read it because I don't have enough money to give you 41 pages. Lake County is located on top of tectonic plate conjunctions and has had a long history of volcanic activity, with the last eruption having occurred 10,000 years ago. The geologic makeup of this region makes Lake County vulnerable to a variety of environment disasters and hazards, such as earthquakes, volcanic eruptions, and geothermal venting of harmful gases, such as hydrogen sulfide and methane. In addition, the area has also experienced frequent flooding and wildfires. This was in 2012. So I have a copy that I want you to read from the cover and the, and this study. And I know this is asking a lot, but I believe that geothermal development has caused earthquakes, has caused a change in the category of Mount Canockdi volcano. And I believe the injection of treated wastewater was a mistake and increased the earthquakes. Please study the pages and please consider this and read it before you give this permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
So here are the copies I made.
And just so that we...
It was Doug Gerhart, Karen Tate, the Lake County Health Officer, and it was also other officials from the state that made this. And it's called a Casper, C-A-S-P-E-R. I'm sure that the corporations and the geothermal companies don't want you to look at this, but I believe that it's very important to the health and safety of the people. Thank you.
Good morning.
My name's Peggy King. Can you hear me?
You might want to get a little closer to the mic.
Okay. Peggy King and I work at Calpine in the Environmental Health and Safety Department. Calpine owns Geysers Power Company. So a couple of things. The road, we'd like to see that complaint if we could. There, there is a public portion of roadway, Socrates Mine Road, that was very, very damaged by some PG&E underground work that was done recently. And I myself actually called the county to discuss that. And so I would ask that we carefully consider the repairs that need to be made there because of the other, other impacts to the road. But I don't know if that complaint is regarding Socrates Mine Road specifically. Okay. Oh, thank you very much.
Oh, great, Jim. Thank you.
Okay. And, and the other thing I have a question about is the 30-year term. We were hoping for life of project, which is consistent with California Government Code Title 7, Division 1, Chapter 4, Article 6, that talks about geothermal being for the productive life of the project and not just 30 years. So we were hoping to kind of cut through a lot of just administrative work and getting these renewals done frequently. And as long as the Geysers are actively producing and making money, it seems to be consistent with, with the state approaches, which is productive life of the project. And also to address Joan Moss's concern about seismicity, there is a SMAC committee that meets, and we do a lot of, a lot of work on seismicity.
And SMAC stands for?
Seismic, seismic monitoring.
Advisory.
Advisory Committee. And that's part of the mitigation for the injection, which, you know, Santa Rosa and Lake County both deliver recycled water.
So is this SMAC committee a public?
It is. And we just had a meeting November 10th, and I believe the next one is May...
I think it's the 13th.
May 13th, and those are held at the Visitor's Center in Middletown. And we really appreciate having the public there. Very informative, and we really are, are very transparent in our communications with the public.
Excellent. Thank you. Would anyone else, would anyone else like to speak on this item? No hands in the Zoom room. Sophia, we're going to unmute you, and just please confirm your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Sophie McArthur. That was actually my comment on the website. I just want to clarify, it is a separate issue from the damage from the PG&E work, though I would also love for that to be fixed. There were two landslides about probably two years ago now, up at the upper end of Socrates Mine, getting close to the entrance to the gated off section of, of the Calpine area, both of which have reduced the, the road to one lane. The details are in the comment, but I just wanted to clarify, it is a separate issue from the PG&E under the roadwork.
And in regards to the extension for the lifetime of the facility, is there a reason why we decided to do something different?
Commissioners, there is a government code section that does address the issuance of permits for the lifetime of a project. It relates to not requiring various permits or multiple permits for this kind of project because there are lots of different parts to this kind of project. So the way our office read that code section was to mean that the county could not then require permits for each individual parts and then keep requiring permits down the line as long as the project was in use. In order, however, if your commission would, would like to look at that kind of language, there would, I would request a continuance because there would need to be some language buttoned up. What, what, the concern here is that to simply insert the language for the useful life of the project into a permit effectively does not give a parameter, and there aren't really any land uses that are into perpetuity forever, not very many of them. And so it would run along, it would run up against the county's or the prohibition on the county transferring its rights and responsibilities as a land use regulator to a third party effectively if we already just put that phrase in without clarifying what that phrase meant as far as what an actual useful life of this particular project, or in this case, I think it's a field, Unit 19, what the useful life of that or the, or the actual larger project of the power generation actually is, then we would effectively be creating a permit that would last forever without any kind of end or an end that is determined by an applicant, which would be transferring the county's responsibility as a regulator to the applicant in determining when a permit should be, should be reviewed and/or ended. So if your...
I'm sure.
If your commission would, would like to look into that kind of language, I would request a continuance so that our office can help draft some language that would at least address some of those concerns. And there are many project types that actually are long-term, like mines and things like that, that also have term of, a term of years. So it could be a greater term of years if your commission would prefer more than 30 years. It could be, it could be the useful life of the project, but it would need to, but that language would need to be clarified in the permit.
Thank you for that, Nicole. And Commissioner Hess?
Yeah, I'm a bit confused simply because this strikes me as a pretty straightforward Geysers permit extension, of which the Commission has dealt with many. And I don't believe I'm mistaken by saying that we have, in fact, extended permits in the past for the life of the project. And this seems to be overcomplicating something that hasn't appeared to be an issue in the past, or am I sleeping through something, Director Turner?
I would never accuse you of sleeping through anything. But rather, we do value the advice that we receive from county council, so...
But how does that stand in, in connection to Calpine permit extensions that we've approved in the past for the life of the project? Why was that not a concern in the past?
For the county council's office, it was in fact a concern in the past, but we provide advice and staff and the commission, the commission makes the determination and the board makes the determination. So in the past, my understanding is that, that the county council did in fact provide these same concerns for those permits as well.
But that doesn't change the fact that the commission did approve them for the life of the project?
Correct. Correct. There may be permits that have been issued for the life of the project. I haven't read those all the way through. I've read a couple of them. My advice for those would have been the same. I don't have a lot of administrative history for those. I don't have minutes and...
No, and I simply have a recollection. I'm not, I'm not looking at a prior extension, you know, reading it verbatim. I'm just wondering, are we setting up some kind of a conflict in that some of those extensions are for the life of the project and this one and/or any moving forward would not be?
As far as this permit goes, I don't think those other permits would be in conflict with this one. I think there may be questions related to those permits potentially at some point. They aren't in front of me at the moment, though. Any questions related to those? For this permit, the advice I gave was, or my office gave was the same as the advice that it had been, or similar to, the advice that had been given to the prior permits. I've expressed my concerns. If your commission would like to actually look to a permit for the life of the project, then again, I would recommend a continuance so that our office can help you provide language to define what that means.
I see no reason to continue, and I don't feel like this is a fall on my sword kind of issue. I was just confused about the apparent change. Perhaps Calpine has a comment on, on that. I did hear what Ms. King had to say earlier, and I'm prepared to vote today. I don't, I don't feel that strongly about it. I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Field?
It seems to me that 30 years is a long time, and as we've seen today, the issue of the roads came up, and I think it's really worth revisiting it in 30 years. That's just my feeling about it.
Thank you. Public comment is still open if you would like to give us any type of rebuttal.
Peggy King, again, from Calpine. We do, I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Hess, yes, we have several use permits that are for the life of project. I know Bear Canyon, Westford Flat are, and then there's a couple others that I don't have memorized. And with regards to the roads and the slides, those slides occurred, first of all, Socrates Mine Road is a public road, and those slides occurred 2016 or 2017? Do you remember? Post Valley Fire. I think it was 2016. And my understanding was that it was a FEMA funding project, and we have been talking with Public Works about this over time. So we're hoping ourselves that those slides will be, will be fixed, but that, that was an act of nature, not caused by any business practices. It was because it was very wet and rainy. So I just wanted to make it clear that that is a county road. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open if there's nothing, I do see your hand up. You're welcome to, let's let someone else speak before we go back to repetitive, not for, you can have a seat. We're going to let someone else speak who hasn't spoken yet. You're welcome to approach the podium, and then I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Matthews to Paris with Calpine. I just wanted to add that Sonoma County, our permits in Sonoma County and other geothermal counties, Imperials another one, they've all granted life of the project on geothermal projects as well. So I just wanted to add that when we first came before the county, Lake County, that was a major point to make for the Planning Commission. So just putting it out there.
Thank you. If you would like to speak? And before you get started, the item that we're, that is in consideration today is an extension of an existing permit.
I understand.
Okay. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Joan Moss, I'm a frustrated journalist, and I have stories, I've written of meetings I have attended, that attest to cancer and attest to the unhealthiness of geothermal development, and they never got published. I wish to submit them so that you can read what we struggled with in the past. Thank you.
If there's no one else wishing to speak on this item, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for further discussion or motion. Public comment is officially closed.
I just had a couple of questions. Can, can one of the applicants tell me what a BLOOL line is? I was reading the, the property management report, and it referred to BLOOL lines, B-L-O-O-L-E. What are those?
Were you looking at the staff report or...
No, I was looking at the property management plan. It's got to be something to do with transferring water or something? No? I looked, I Googled that.
Oh, no. I'll get back to you.
I'm just, okay, thank you. And then in the air quality section, there was a reference to bleed rates?
If you do have a response, if you guys could, one of you come up to the mic. Thank you. And this was in regards to bleed lines?
Bleed rates.
Bleed rates.
Peggy King, Calpine.
Peggy King, Calpine. So air quality and bleed rates would be if a well needed to be opened up for some reason, if it's clogged or whatever. I'm not putting this in technical terms because I'm not, not really quite back into the technical, I used to work at air quality, but, so it would be when well is on bleed, it would be reported to the air district, and then there would be a certain amount of flow, and then it would be monitored. And that's all, all reported to the air district. And every well, every single well has an air permit.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think I get it now.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just have a comment really quick. You know, after taking into consideration some of the concerns and listening to County Council, you know, I can in good consciousness support a lifetime extension based off of concerns that are raised, not only with information, you know, information is important. We're relying on these various groups, the SMAC group to, you know, do the due diligence, and if we're not actively participating, then we don't, we don't know what's going on over there. And so one of the troubles I have is, you know, being a lifetime resident here in Lake County and knowing that my, my family is going to continue to be here, you know, it's important to consider what lifetime could potentially cause, and if we don't have any recourse in the future, that concerns me. I'm willing to look at the timeline we have here of 2052 and think that's plenty for myself, you know, in terms of being able to support this moving forward, but anything beyond that in good consciousness, I wouldn't be able to support in terms of potential impacts that are unforeseeable. And that's the comment I'm going to make.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hess?
I, I respect my colleagues' comments, and I understand the point about unforeseeable developments in the future. I've dealt with many of these in the past, and I'm sure some of my other colleagues have too. And I'm prepared to vote for the motions as drafted and to pass on life of the project. But I'd also like to say, this isn't a time to cast aspersions or a cloud over Calpine. Calpine's an asset to the community. Not only do they hire and employ a lot of people, but they are transparent. And the SMAC group and an Anderson Springs group have been meeting regularly with Calpine for years. And Danielle Suparis Matthews is one of the people behind that. And I just, I don't want to turn this straightforward permit extension into some kind of commentary on Calpine or its practices or lack of transparency, because I, I don't believe that's accurate or fair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Chavez, do you have anything to say?
No, I just, I agree with the comments from Commissioner Brown. He pretty much put it into whatever my brain was thinking. He put it in there. So it was very easy to, to understand the point he was making there in regards to having to potentially go back and, kind of like the comment that came out here regarding the roads and any other thing that might come up. But like you said, we're not really involved in that, the commission isn't. It is on, on the conditions of approval that the planning commission, the permit shall be reviewed by the planning commission every five years or as necessary. I mean, from the last approval for this permit, when, how many planning commissions have, have been involved with the, with this project? I don't think there's been many, or if there's any on record. So I agree with, or with following this to the 30-year extension and then reviewing it then as well.
Thank you. I echo what my colleagues say as well. Just kind of having our hands in it, it's just nice to let it pass through. So if anyone is prepared to, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Field?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, please.
Okay. I move that the planning commission find that the use permit extension UPX 22-03, applied by Geyser's Power, applied for by Geyser's Power Company LLC on property located at 9010 Socrates Mine Road in Middletown, California, on sections 1621 and 22 T11N R8W, further described as Parcell's Number 013004-15, is exempt from CEQA because it falls within categorical exemption Class 1 based on the findings set forth in the staff report dated November 17th, 2022.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess? Commissioner Hess?
Commissioner Hess? Oh, you might be on mute.
I was, I was muted. I apologize. My, I say aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that use permit extension UPX 22-03, applied for by Geyser's Power Company LLC on property located at 9010 Socrates Mine Road in Middletown, California, on sections 1621 and 22 T11N R8W, further described as 013-004-15, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4A of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the categorical exemption CE22-41, and that the use permit extension UPX 22-03 be granted, subject to the conditions and with findings listed in the staff report dated November 17th, 2022.
A second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Thank you, everyone, on that one. Moving on to our next item, says a public hearing continued from October 27th, 2022 for consideration of proposed major use permit UP21-09 and mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS21-09 for outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. Applicant is Loco Farms Incorporated. Project location is 21080 Loconomi Road, Middletown, APN 014-140-12. Good morning, Byron.
Good morning. Just give me one second to.
Sure, take your time.
Good morning. Oh, share screen.
You might have to X out of it and then go back in, or press F5. There you go. Excellent. Thank you, Sam.
This is use permit 21-09, initial study 21-09 for Loco LLC, Loco Farms LLC. This is located at 21080 Loconomi Road in the Middletown area. This use permit will give the applicant the ability to get their state licenses for Type A 3 and, and a Type 13 self-distribution outdoor cannabis licenses, and, yeah, and that's a one acre of outdoor. The Middletown area, this is located, located in the Middletown area off of Butts Canyon Road, off of Loconomi Road, off of Butts Canyon Road. It's not accessed directly by Butts Canyon, but Loconomi Road does, it does intersect with Butts Canyon. The zoning of the site is rural residential, as is the general plan. The proposal is for just under an acre of outdoor canopy and 35 beds. It also includes a 2,600 square foot processing building with 1,170 square feet of outdoor storage area adjacent to the building. Also included are four 4,800 gallon water tanks and a compost area. The site has 20, 20-foot wide access that will meet CAL FIRE standards and be fully fenced. The site is serviced by PG&E with solar-powered water pumps. It's on existing well and septic. And there's an existing residence on the site. Staff has reviewed the following documents for compliance, Lake County General Plan, the Middletown Area Plan, the Lake County zoning ordinance and the state regulations. The site, the project is not inconsistent with the general plan, and policies for the Middletown Area Plan have been applied to, have been applied and analyzed as part of this project. This also is rural residential zoning. The cannabis, outdoor cannabis is a conditionally permitted use in the rural residential zoning, and all waterway setbacks have been met for the WW overlay zone, as well as all development standards in Article 27 have been met by this project as well. There was a water availability analysis that was performed, and a drought management plan has been prepared for this project and submitted and reviewed in accordance with ordinance 3106. The site will require 2.29 acre feet of water per year. The report indicates that sufficient water without impacting neighboring wells is available on the site, and that drip irrigation will be used in order to conserve water. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for this project, and identify, mitigation measures were identified to be implemented in order to reduce any impacts. Is staff recommendation then that you adopt mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS2109 for the project, with findings that potential resource impacts may result from , that impacts are mitigated, and that you approve use permit 21-09 with the proposed conditions of approval and findings found in the staff report, available for any questions?
Thank you for that. Anyone on the commission have questions for staff before we open it up for public comment? No? All right.
No questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We do have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
In the mitigations on energy, I'm hoping that Byron can expand a little bit on how the mitigation regarding providing energy calculations is, is actually a mitigation. I think it might be a condition, just because it's normally required with all of our permits anyway.
I would, I would absolutely agree with that, that, that's not really a mitigation measure, but a standard condition of approval and state law that energy require, energy calculations are required to meet the standards. So it's written in as a mitigation, just to, you know, sometimes mitigation measures will be written in, even though they are law, in order to inform the applicant that they are going to be required.
Awesome. And would you like to add that or amend it to a condition of approval as opposed to?
No, I think his, his explanation suffices for today. We have a couple more, just for clarification. Thank you. Hazard mitigation number three. Prior to operation, the applicant shall schedule an inspection with the Lake County Code Enforcement Division to verify adherence to all requirements. I'd actually like to have that one stricken, because it's our, we do have planning staff that are typically our first outreach to, to inspect and make sure that everything is according to the permit, and then code enforcement follows up as needed. So that one would just, if we strike that one, we'll still have plenty of hazard mitigations, but we'll go back then to our normal process.
Okay.
If the applicant, or if Byron has no issue with that. Super. And then the last one. I would request a modification in the cultural mitigations. They make reference to the overseeing tribe, but we do not determine which tribe is overseeing. So we'd like to switch the term overseeing to culturally affiliated tribes, so that it's not limiting.
So it's more of a blanket?
Exactly.
Okay. And Byron, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Super duper.
Excellent. I appreciate, I appreciate your clarification, Director. We will open it up for public comment if anyone wishes to speak on this item. Good morning, and just be sure to state your first and last name for me, please.
Absolutely. Good morning, members of the commission and staff. Nora Dalbaka, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I've known the, the applicant and the owner of the property since I was a teenager, so a long, long time, and, and Michael Colbrun is actually a business partner of mine as well in our, in our other day-to-day work. So I want, I'm here to talk today a little bit about the applicant, a little bit about their other projects, and, and then a little bit about your decision here today. So they're already operating Ghost Dance Ranch up on Jerusalem Grade and have been, this is their second harvest.
And I believe that passed through our hands, didn't it?
It did, yeah. And they are excellent stewards of the land since getting up into that, that land on, on Jerusalem Grade. They've done amazing work on clearing out dead wood, being excellent neighbors in terms of fire mitigations, and have also been really good at bringing awareness to what licensed cannabis is actually like in, in Lake County. They, Michael set up a Lake County Tourism event to talk a little bit about, about cannabis. He's the VP of the LCCA. It's a board I also sit on. They did try to meet with the neighbors at Loco, but they, the neighbors did decline that meeting. I'm going to talk a little bit about the rest of the team, who all live in Lake County. I've done some work with them on compliance and, and other government, government side of things, which is incredibly difficult for cannabis businesses. So the family that lives at Loco, Crystal and Christopher, are not here today because they just had a baby a couple of weeks ago. They have another child who's in school in Middletown. My son's also in school in Middletown. I live in Hidden Valley. So we're all, we're all local. While the, the three of us might be new, Jessica, who is the, the head of the farm, has been in Lake County for about 15 years. She is an amazing plant genius. She, the first time that she met with Michael at Ghost Dance, she bent down and tasted the earth. She was able to identify every native floral and fauna that she saw, and as well as the invasive ones, and that's why they've been able to be such good land stewards up at Ghost Dance. This is a, Loco is a, is a different site. It's very flat, doesn't have the kind of native, it's a, it's a really disturbed land. When they got onto the site, there were a bunch of abandoned animals there. Crystal and Christopher actually adopted the dog that was there and made sure that the rest of the animals that were, that were there were cared for. They've cleaned up, they have done voluntary road repairs on Loconomi Road, and been as good of neighbors as they possibly can be. They're a wonderful family. And the reason I'm talking so much about, you know, who we are, is because some of the letters that you received in opposition made some pretty nasty aspersions about the kind of people who farm cannabis. And we're members of the community, just like you. We're raising our kids here, just like, just like they are. We're contributing to the community, just like, just like everybody else is, and we're, we're your neighbors, we're your community. So cannabis is the most regulated crop in the entire state, and I often say that I wish that my food and my wine were as regulated as, as the cannabis was, because I know that the cannabis is unbelievably clean. This is an, going to be an organic farm, they're going to be, only be using, you know, they're as, as no chemicals, only organic pesticides. and only use those as needed. So it's going to be a really, really clean, a really, really clean crop as well. So I just, I just wanted to get in front of you today and to humanize this project. Although your decision is today just based entirely on the land use and this project conforms to the land use designations, I also want you to be proud to be able to vote for this project and as proud as we all are to be part of Lake County and to be your neighbors. I'm here to answer any questions, if you do have them, for the project sponsors or any of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there any hands in the Zoom room, Jim? Okay.
Oh, wait, there's one down. Damian Ramirez?
Okay. Damian, we're going to unmute you. If you could please confirm your first and last name.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, my name is Damian Ramirez. I'm calling in to voice my support for this project. I have property adjacent to the location of the proposed project, and I'm familiar with the area. I have gotten to know the applicants over the course of the past couple of years. It's a really good group of people, as Nora has previously just said. In my experience, I must say, the group of operators involved in this project, they're quality, respectful, kind individuals. They work diligently, they work hard, and they're respectful. I'm familiar with their skills, their techniques involved in their operations, and they're really just top-notch across the board when it comes to efficiency, sustainability. I've had the pleasure of visiting their other location at Ghost Dance Ranch. I've been there on multiple occasions, and in my firsthand experience, I must say, they run a clean, efficient grow with minimal staff, and all of the interactions I've had with any of their staff, they've just been kind, respectful, just throughout every one I've ever had. I can completely understand the concerns, some of the concerns listed by the surrounding neighbors, and I believe that some of the main ones are potentially unwarranted. There's lots of mitigation measures put in place, along with just a really highly regulated, well-thought-out ordinances and other regulations from other regulatory bodies that are set forth to really mitigate a lot of these concerns. The applicant seemed to have submitted all the required permits, registrations, and studies. Byron put together a staff report, comprehensive, the property zoning meets the county requirements, and the applicants have proven that, you know, their track record has been positively contributing members to the county. They're simply exercising their legal rights to operate a small business. I encourage the Commissioners to try to remove emotion at some times and make a decision based on the laws and requirements put forth by the state of California and the county of Lake, and vote positive and in favor of this project. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate what each of you do up there.
Thank you so much. And any other hands in the Zoom room?
I don't see any.
Since there are no hands in the Zoom room, I'll take one last look around chambers, and I don't believe anyone else wishes to speak on this item. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Hess, do you have anything, any input, any wisdom to share? Any input?
Thank you. Thank you. Just a question for Byron. In response to some of the neighbor concerns and a letter and a petition that was sent, Lauren Fuller is the signatory of one of the letters. She, they requested that this project does go forward, some, a number of things be observed, that all employees of the grove be respectful, considerate, coming down gravel road, drive slow, no loitering or littering. There's six points that she makes in that letter, and I just wanted some assurance from Byron that you're familiar with these concerns and that they have been addressed in the conditions of approval. It seems to me they have been, but I would just like to sound that off of you, Byron.
Thank you. I think that the conditions of, the standard conditions of approval of the concerns that are expressed that the county has control over, their standard conditions of approval with regard to, you know, the speed limit, keeping the site clean, those are all standard conditions. I do think they address the issues.
Thank you. I think it's important to, you know, indicate to the community that we do hear those concerns and have noted them.
Yeah, just a little acknowledgement and that we do hear their concerns and that those mitigations are, and conditions are in there for, you know, for the well-being of the surrounding properties. Any further discussion?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Madam Chair.
I had some comments I wanted to make. I wanted to agree with Commissioner Hess about the letters from the neighbors. I have heard people refer to this as simply nimbyism, and although several of the letters do express concerns that have been addressed, such as pesticide drift from cannabis grows and chemicals leaching into aquifers, some valid concerns do remain, safety, traffic, air pollution, among others. And I think our planning staff does an excellent job applying the regulations, you know, the general plan, the Middletown Area Plan, the current cannabis ordinance to the applications. But I don't feel like we should be ignoring neighbor concerns, and I don't feel that we are. I mean, who knows better whether a permit is incompatible than the neighbors? You know, it's a difficult decision for us to make, and I think we're derelict in our duties if we ignore neighbors' concerns. Having said that, you know, these decisions are not easy. There's a comment about cultural conflicts. Ms. Fuller points out that some of the people knowledgeable about cannabis have been growing it illegally for years. She refers to the culture as criminal element. And we're not in a position to judge that, but my attitude is, even if they are, we should give people a chance to come clean. So having said that, I understand this area is zoned rural residential, and people who purchased or built homes here have a reasonable expectation of not being in a commercial cannabis production area. And whether this is a failure of the ordinance or the general plan, I agree this commercial cannabis production. And I keep hearing the term farm and crop, and that's not what we're talking about. This is not an agricultural activity, because it does not produce food or fiber. And to me, it does appear to be a compatible land use in this area, mostly because of the parcel size, and I'm not seeing neighboring agricultural activities. I had a comment about the, oh, a question about the fertilizers. I don't know if you'd be able to answer this. In the property management plan on page three and page four, the initial study refers to liquid fertilizers, but yet it's just proposing compost. So first, it says it'll be compost, then says it'll be liquid. Are we talking about compost, the kind that you produce on site? Are we talking about vermiculture?
If you'd like to answer, you can.
Your compost.
One up.
And the reason I think this is a big issue is air quality, among others, really.
So I can talk to you a little bit about what's happening at Ghost Dance, and I imagine that since it's the same farm team, it'll be very substantially similar at Loco. What Jesse moved to this year was a living compost tea, which is produced and then delivered to the plants via the drip irrigation line. So there's no odor.
Okay, so it's produced off-site?
It is, it's fermented on-site with a couple of inputs that are ordered in. And then there's some organic powder, you know, and dry compost and dry inputs that are mixed in with the soil early on. So there's not, and there's occasionally a foliar spray, but again, that's an incredibly diluted, again, fully organic, living, living component, so.
I just want to make it clear that this is not an agricultural activity under the laws I understand it. And although I'm an organic farmer myself, and because of the right to farm ordinance, I'm allowed to use really stinky stuff.
Right.
But cannabis is not. I just want to make that clear.
Right, yeah. Cannabis, again, is much more heavily regulated than other agricultural uses. We wish it was deemed ag, because it feels like it and it looks like it, and it's a plant. But yes, it's not treated that way.
And it may be down the road. We don't know yet.
Exactly. Yeah, we'll see.
I think there was one other thing. Oh, yeah, I wanted to talk about the water. I just wanted to point out, this is mostly for staff, I see a claim of a need for 124,000 gallons per month, and I don't know what your spacing is, but I'm seeing that the standard spacing is five by five, so that's kind of the number I use, 25 square feet per plant. That comes out to 1,742 plants per acre. And then using a conservative measure that I think everyone's using, six gallons per day, I know this is boring, I do this every meeting, but I think it's important. That's 10,452 gallons per day, or 313,560 per month, about twice what is being projected. To draw this much water from underground aquifers, you'll need over seven gallons per minute. And you have 15.5, so I'm not concerned, but I think it's important to consider how much water is actually being consumed here.
That might have been a fabric.
No, the 124 gallons per month is the peak usage. Those are all of my comments.
If you'd like to, you're welcome to come up to the mic, just so everybody else can hear you as well.
Quickly, I'd love to address the property value question, and Michael and Alex have actually greatly improved, along with Crystal and Christopher, who live there, the property and the land and the home. So they've gutted both of the houses and redone them. They're beautiful inside. They're growing, starting to grow plants and a lot of landscaping around it. So I actually think that the look of the properties has actually been greatly improved since they've taken ownership. So hopefully that'll increase the property value.
Any other?
Madam Chair, if there are no other comments from our colleagues, I'd be prepared to offer a motion.
Floor is yours, Commissioner Hess.
Thank you. I move that the Planning Commission find that mitigated negative declaration IS 21-09 prepared for Loco Farms, Inc., for the property located at 21080 Locunomi Road, Middletown, California, further described as APN 014-140-12, will not have a negative effect on the environment and therefore a determination of mitigated negative declaration with the accompanying mitigated monitoring and reporting program, MMRP, shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated November 17, 2022.
A second.
Motion and a second. Jim, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I further move that the Planning Commission find that major use permit UP 21-09 applied for by Loco Farms, Inc., for the property located at 21080 Locunomi Road, Middletown, and further describing this motion does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, ATI, IIG, IIII of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, with amended site plan and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated November 17, 2022.
A second.
Motion and a second. Jim?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. I'm showing a time now of 10:05. We will take a quick break and resume at 10:10. Thank you. If we could take our seats. All right. Thank you for your patience. Our next item is a public hearing on consideration of draft ordinance amending Chapter 21, Article 58, and Chapter 21, Article 68 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance pertaining to appeals.
Yeah. Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. At its last meeting in September, the Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution of intention to amend the zoning code in specific regard to documentation submitted for appeals. Supervisor Sabatier was responding to an issue of large amounts of documentation being submitted, like at the hearing or prior to the hearing, which did not allow the board enough time to do proper review, and so the appeal would then result in a continuance. And so to address this issue, the amendment to the code would require that, let me get the right term, because it's a new definition, that documentary evidence, which is any document which is offered and admitted as evidence during an administrative appeal, Planning Commission appeal, or a Board of Supervisors appeal, as provided in Article 58 and Chapter 21. So any time documentary evidence was going to be submitted, there is a requirement now, this amendment would require that documentary evidence to be submitted no less than 96 hours prior to the hearing. And this is to enable the board or the deciding body to have enough time to review it, so it wouldn't result in a late-minute continuance. So it is presented to you today to provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding this, and it does amend a number of different areas in the code specific to the deciding body and the definitions.
Excellent. Thank you, Director. Let's see.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, are you opening it up to comment from the commission?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Sure. I think this is a welcome amendment, and I think it will really help the process moving forward. Whether intentions are good or bad, getting large tranches of information and data at the 11th hour really does create a burden on the commissioners and on supervisors to do their due diligence, and that applies to the CDD staff as well. And this seems like a pretty straightforward way to deal with that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess.
Yeah, and we've known this to be an issue. For example, this morning, when we were already on the item, we got the email, so you only have a few seconds to kind of look over and try to make a decision on the spot. So I agree with the amending as well.
You said just about exactly what I was going to say, but more articulately. Thank you. I just wanted to add that, you know, I feel very strongly that the public needs to be involved in this decision-making process. So if there's anything we can do to make it very clear at the outset that these things need to be submitted 96 hours before, that's four days, that's, if people know that we have that timeframe, I mean, I think that's a really important part of it.
We could definitely add that wording to the agenda, as well as notifying the appellant possibly on our appeal form. Yeah, that would be good.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions for Director Turner? Okay. I think we're all kind of in a consensus at this point.
Yeah, if a formal motion needs to be made, I'll make it. I move that we.
Do we need to open it up for public comment? Yes? All right. I will officially open it up for public comment, since we've had a chance to discuss. Anyone want to add? to discuss. Anyone want to add? Any comments or questions for staff in regards to the amendment for appealing, the appealment process? Any hands in the Zoom room?
I don't have any.
No hands in the Zoom room? Okay, we'll officially close public comment and bring it back to the commission for motion. I don't have it.
Unless Director Turner has something prepared written for me to recommend, I would recommend that we we make a recommendation to the board of supervisors approving this. Okay, awesome. Thanks. Maybe you can read it since you've got.
I can do it, yeah. So I move that the planning commission approve the recommendation to the board of supervisors regarding the draft ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested party, hold on, let me just instead of trying to wing it, please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay. All right. Our next timed item is a public hearing for consideration of major use permit UP 21-05 and mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS 21-05 for outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. Applicant is RS Greenery LLC. Project location is 6233 and 6243 Ikoff Road, Lakeport, APNs 003-046-02 and 003-046-78. And we do have Byron presenting.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, this item is Use Permit 21-05 for RS Greenery. This is located at 6243 Ikoff Road, north of the city of Lakeport. The request is to allow for a use permit to allow two A Type III medium outdoor cultivation sites, cultivation licenses, and a Type 13 self distribution on a parcel that is 80 acres in size. The site is Zone RL Rural Lands. The general plan is also RL. It's in the Upper Lake Neese Community Planning Area, just barely in the Upper Lake Neese Community Planning Area. But we triple check that one.
It just kind of sits in that weird spot. Yeah.
Exactly. As you can see from the vicinity map, again, it is kind of confusing about the area, but the line comes right around. The two licenses will result in approximately 84,848 square feet of outdoor canopy. The site is fenced in its entirety, and other development on the site would include 14 parking spaces, 120 square foot storage container, two sheds for pesticide or ag chemicals, and a 5,000 gallon water tank to supplement the existing 5,000, so three additional, sorry, three additional 5,000 gallon water tanks to supplement the existing 5,000 gallon water tank. This thing well is drilled to a depth of 140 feet. It yields 50 gallons per minute, which easily supports the 63 to 88 gallons per minute required according to the hydrology report. Site's located between 1,500 and 1,950 feet in elevation on the southern slopes of Poe Mountain. The general plan, area plan, and zoning ordinance and state regulations were all reviewed for compliance of this project. Cannabis cultivation, again, is is not inconsistent with the rural lands, rural lands general plan designation. There are policies in the Upper Lake Neese Community Area Plan that have been applied to this project to ensure consistency. And with regard to rural lands, cannabis, commercial cannabis cultivation is a conditionally permitted use in the rural land designation, as well as the all the setbacks that have been met for the Waterway Combining District. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project. It was circulated from September 14th to October 13th. It was found that with mitigation, the, any any impacts would be completely, would be mitigated to a lesser significant impact. At this point, we recommend that you adopt mitigated negative declaration initial study 21-05 and approve Use Permit 21-05 contingent upon the recommended conditions of approval. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Thank you.
I'd want to point out that as a condition of approval, the all development will meet the 4290 and 4291 fire standards.
Yeah, that road. Any questions or comments from the commission for the applicant? Or go ahead, take the floor.
Is any vegetation or tree removal proposed for this project?
You're welcome to come up to the podium. Thanks. Or, yeah, right. Or also, it looks pretty hilly, grating, anything like that?
Kelly Hunter? Nope. Nothing, nothing to be removed or or graded or anything, so.
So it's already cleared?
It's it's already just, it was a patch that was already settled. So there's nothing to be dozed or removed or flattened or anything.
Thank you.
So.
Madam Chair?
Please.
In the, I've noticed some some sort of boilerplate language that seems to be emerging in the hydrology reports, specifically when it comes to drought management plan, which is of course a welcome thing, a drought management plan. But the language in this drought report, as well as others that we have seen, it says to ensure both success and decreased impacts to the surrounding areas, blank firm plans to reduce their outdoor cultivation cannabis area and water usage by 10% when a drought emergency has been declared for their region. Well, we've been in that kind of a drought emergency in this region for some time, and I don't know what that means. Does this mean that this drought management plan will automatically be implemented instead of what is in the staff report? Or how are, how are, how is a drought emergency being perceived?
Good question. I do believe the consultant's here to speak. Good morning, Trey.
Good morning. This is Trey Sherrill representing RS Greenery. Commissioner Hess, to answer your question, yes, this, we are currently in a declared drought emergency, so therefore the drought management plan would need to be implemented at this time. If, if, you know, please, if the drought were at the end this this winter, it would not be applicable until the next drought emergency is declared.
Thank you. And I certainly wasn't singling out this one application. It's just that I've noticed that kind of language has become a standard part of drought management plans we see. Thanks, Trey.
Yeah, thank you.
And while we're on the subject, thank you, Commissioner Hess. I noted exactly the same thing, this cut and paste. My problem with it is that we, the verbiage uses a square foot, you know, acre feet for water, and it's really not applicable to cannabis. We're calculating things on the way the water's actually applied. I think that in traditional agriculture, maybe where flood irrigation was used, that was a useful term, but it gets pretty confusing when you have to multiply gallons per square cubic foot. So whoever's writing this language that we're all cutting and pasting, can we change that? That's my my only comment about the water.
Madam Chair, if I may actually also address this, I did want to point out that most of the applications that you see were originally submitted prior to the drought emergency being declared. So a lot of these applications then got put on hold while then these reports were generated. So that that kind of explains why the original, you know, why it all applies that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Trey Sherrill, once again for RS Greenery. And I did craft the drought management plan for this application. So I'm seeking further clarification to do better in the future.
Okay, that would be wonderful. Let me, I wrote some notes while I was reading it.
If I may, just the urgency ordinance that I've asked staff this, and the problem with the urgency ordinance is it doesn't provide any guidelines for the drought management plan. It just says that we have to provide one. I've asked if 10% reduction is sufficient, or should it be 20% or 25? I, you know, there's no one saying that what, there's no standard for what a drought management plan would be. And so without any guidance, this was my best attempt at it for this project.
Yeah, and I'm not just addressing the drought management, just the the way we talk about water. And I agree, we're in a in a weird place. We're comparing it to cannabis production to tomatoes and corn, and we're using numbers that are based on a study that was done on the the North Coast where we have a lot higher humidity. So, yeah, it's kind of difficult. I understand that. My comment was just about using the terms because I do all this math to try and figure out if there's enough water and how much water is being used. I don't have any comments about the emergency. I think that's kind of above my.
And if I may, so the county has now, they're now applying a standard. It is somewhat based off that North Coast Water Board study that you're, it's also the Fish and Wildlife, the Bauer study. The six gallons per, or six gallons per day per plant was based off of a cultivation of the time where it was, you were limited to 99 plants. This is prior to MERSA being implemented. You were limited to a total of 99 plants. At that point in time, you wanted to grow the largest plant. If you were limited to 99, you're going to grow the largest 99 you could. Modern cultivation doesn't do that anymore. I I believe that an acre feet or inches per acre is a more accurate way of representing how much water cannabis, modern cannabis cultivation consumes. And I do believe that is on par with that of other crops now that we're growing, you know, that the growing methodology has has evolved.
Well, thank you. You clearly know more about it than I do, but I have also contacted other people within this community who've been growing for years, and they're saying that six gallons per day per plant is very conservative. So I'd like to have a broader education about this. And I don't know if, we had a really good education session, what was it, a month ago, about Native American artifacts. And if we could do something like that about cannabis, that would be really helpful and water.
Making note. Thank you.
Go ahead. Hi.
Madam Chair, Madam Commissioner, to echo what you are bringing about Patrick Wright's. I'm actually not talking as fire chief right now. I'm talking as Patrick Wright's. So, but to echo, when I read the reports as well, I found it extremely confusing because it references inches per plant, inches of water per plant, and then it goes, then it switches two different languages talking about gallonage versus acre feet. So, but it provided no conversion. I mean, I know how to do the math, but I would tell you for the layperson, this would be extremely confusing. There needs to be some standardized language. Are we talking about inches? Are we talking about acre feet? Are we talking about gallonage, which most of us understand gallonage? But I would, I would echo your sentiment that I found it extremely confusing in the paperwork because it does change. Early on in the report, it's referencing the inches, and then it switches, and it never references the inches again. So I would really encourage the commission to push for a standardization for water usage.
Thank you. And I think it's probably much more important that you understand the water availability than I do.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Jim, is there any hands in the Zoom room?
Are we in public comment yet?
You know, I think we've had so much discussion. I don't think I officially opened public comment. It was just a discussion between us and the applicant and consultant. So we will open public comment officially. And anyone is welcome to speak.
If you want to wait till after I talk, you certainly can.
Okay. Hi, Commissioners. My name's Kelly Hunter. I'm the owner and operator of RS Greenery. I just wanted to give you a little bit about me. I've lived in Lake County for 12 years. I've created lifelong friendships, and I've gotten to know so many people and great families. My family's been coming here since the 50s from just tourism, boat racing, waterski racing. I've worked in vineyards, tourism, and construction, giving me an even better understanding of Lake County dynamics. This application, UP 21-05, has been long, tedious. It's a process that has taken much of my heart and soul. I've personally worked one on one with Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, archaeologists, biologists, wealth surveyors, local, county, and state jurisdictions, learning every step of the way. I am passionate about working with the ecosystem and creating a sustainable habitat. In Lake County, less input is required to achieve a high quality product. I'll work hard to conserve and preserve land by mitigating to the fullest any areas impacted during operations. Also, the income generated by RS Greenery will be spent buying local and investing local. Lake County is my home. It's our home, and I ask you Commissioners to approve application UP 21-05. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Patrick Wright's, Fire Chief for Lakeport Fire Protection District. Ms. Turner, I'm going to point to you for just a second because I haven't heard your report on this as you gave for the last cannabis grow. Or do you have a report to give to the commission?
Thank you. I don't have a report so much as the similar request for amendments to the conditions as the previous item, which would involve the prior, in the section that addresses requirements for 4290 and 4291, at the end on number five, where it says prior to operation, the applicant shall schedule an inspection with the Code Enforcement Division, I'd like to strike the Lake County Code Enforcement Division and just have schedule an inspection with the Community Development Department. And a similar modification to Cultural Resources to refer to culturally affiliated tribes rather than the local overseeing tribe. But those are the end of my requests. The, okay, excuse me. We're coughing over here. But I did want to just make note that the 4290 requirements that are included in the conditions refer to road standards for fire equipment access, including gate entrances, water supply for emergency fire use, signing streets, roads, and buildings, and fuel modification standards. And so we do have it bullet pointed and cited to a number of the Public Resource Code sections rather than listing everything out because it would take pages. But I'm hoping that that, let's see, that, yep, that actually concludes my requested amendments.
Okay.
Good morning.
Hi.
Thank you for that. As I've only been on the ground for a little over two weeks, and I cannot speak for prior administrations, the paperwork I received on this project was actually from a third party, and I received it Monday and haven't had a whole lot of time. So my apologies. And if I am either redundant And if I am either redundant or missing something, please feel free to correct me. However, I do have a few concerns over this and any development that's out in the rural areas. You did cite water usage for fire and there is a 10,000 gallon minimum fire, separate storage for fire that is required and should be implemented for this project because this project is doing property development. So, that is, and that would be, that's a minimum and could be increased due to the size of the development itself. So, that needs to be looked at again and implemented as well with the recommendations. Security, there was nothing in the recommendations regarding Knox boxes or Knox locks for fire department response. And we will be requiring those as well for the development and would meet with the project owner to discuss those, to make sure that those are correctly implemented for our access. We're putting these grow operations out in rural areas off of rural roads and we obviously have a serious concern with access and egress, not just for fire getting in, but also for evacuation. And want to redouble our efforts when we are looking at county roads. Having driven around that neighborhood and several others in Lake County, road conditions are poor at best and not only for width, but also for just general road condition. So, want to call that attention as well. I am not putting that onto the developer of the project. I put that back onto Lake County itself, that we need to use caution when we're putting these projects out there. Granted, the amount of traffic that's going to be increased is not significant, a significant impact. But if we start talking about trucks, weighted deliveries, those kind of heavy equipment moving in and out of the areas, now we're talking a whole different ballgame. So, want to take those considerations as well. Communications, I have a serious concern for communications in the area because we have a lot of cell phone dead zones in this area. And when it comes to not only being able to access 911, to call 911 for assistance, but also to, for us as emergency responders to call back in when we're using the reverse 911 systems, or I believe it's here, it's Nexi, you can correct me.
Nexel or something.
Nexel. So, there's several of them out there, but the one that we're using to reverse 911 and contact these folks to let them know they need to prep for evacuation or they need to evacuate or shelter in place. These are concerns when we start talking development in rural areas. And this, it is upon this commission to put conditions on to these folks to guarantee access to communications, whether that is cell phone boosters or mandated hard lines. Regardless, it has to be something that we can get on hold of these folks because they are putting employees at risk by establishing businesses in rural areas. So, obviously earlier contact for both them to call us if there's an incident on their property, but also for us to reach them if there's an incident impacting their property to be able to evacuate their employees. So, I would implore the commission, and I have not had a chance to meet with Community Development to express my concerns on these projects on a go-forward basis. So, I would put that back to this commission and you can certainly direct me to where I need to go, not only for this project, but on a go-forward basis. So, I will plead a little bit of ignorance. I'm sorry, I've only been on the ground for two, for a little over two weeks. And again, I can't speak to the prior Fire Chief or Chiefs in this case as this project was initiated back in 2021. At least that's the paperwork I saw dated. So, that is, that is my request to this commission.
I first thank you for coming and getting your feet wet and putting yourself in front of us. I did see you at the City Council meeting in Lakeport as well.
That was another fun meeting.
Yes, that was fun. But definitely bringing up some very important points and, you know, when some type of development like this does go on, it does, it does impact and should include, you know, lots of different hands in the pot. And your opinion is very, very valued and welcome.
The paperwork, and again, I apologize and I apologize to you as, you know, coming forward. But, but the, to drop this on the last minute and not catching this ahead of time, but it went through our office from what I could tell back in, in somewhere around April of 2021. That chief would have only been on the ground for a couple of months as well. And I can't speak to him, so I don't know if he saw it, he missed it, he didn't respond. I have no idea. But I did see that there were no generated comments from Lakeport Fire Protection District. So, coming in at this almost 13th hour, if you will, is concerning for me and should be concerning for them as well. But at the same time, I want to start bringing stuff forward so that we're not catching it in the hearing process, that we are getting ahead of this. My background is, is in emergency preparation and disaster preparedness. So, I look at things a little bit differently rather than just, this is a wildland fire incident. I'm going to look at this as one of their employees could get hurt.
Safety, for sure.
Yeah, it's overall.
And just a quick question, have you been out to the property at EICOFF?
Not proper. I have not been to the property proper. I've been in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And that's the best I can do at this point in time. So, you know, normally I would go out.
But definitely you got a feel for the road conditions, the narrowness, the small little bridges that are out there and definitely to think about large trucks going out there, you know, even if it is just for a part of the development process. Because I mean, they're not going to have trucks out there all the time.
Correct.
But to think about, you know, coming into contact with one of those large trucks on that road is something to be aware of and to be.
Well, response time is obviously an issue for us.
Oh, for sure.
So, again, early notification in either direction is so vitally important. And the communications, I, we are putting cell phone boosters on our vehicles now because of the radio black holes that exist out there. I was amazed at just even driving around the lake where I would expect cell phone connectivity was minimal or non-existent.
Non-existent, absolutely.
And I was not that far from where I would expect to find an antenna. So, you know, there, I still have a lot of discovery to do for Lake County, but at the same time, I want to bring my concerns forward so that we are addressing them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I think that what we should do is probably address the project that's on the floor and then some of your other really salient issues, maybe afterward during our department update, if that would be appropriate.
That's not a noticed item to continue.
That's true. It isn't. I'm looking at Nicole.
If I may.
I'd also like to make a more general comment. There are, welcome aboard, sir. And you have a lot of firefighting colleagues throughout the county who have a lot of experience with our roads and rural areas that I think could be of worth of information for you too. Your point about dead zones in terms of communications is absolutely legitimate, but that wouldn't only apply to a commercial project in that area. That would apply to the residents of the area who are currently living there. And in terms of requiring boosters for one person living in that kind of a neighborhood and not for another would be, would have to be examined. And further, Mike Wink, who's a battalion chief down here in the South County, he's explained to the commission previously that the 4290 improvements, conditions only apply to the property where the application has been filed, not for the roads leading to that, to that easement or property line. So, the condition of the incoming roads isn't really the responsibility of an applicant in any particular case.
And Commissioner, I respect your comments and that's exactly what I did say is that it is not the applicant's responsibility for the roads. You did differentiate between the applicant being commercial versus the residents in the area. And you're absolutely right. I can't put those conditions on or recommend, I mean, we can always make recommendations, but I, making the, this is, this is a commercial operation and I'm looking at it as a commercial operation. I'm not looking at the neighbors. I'm not looking at anything else at this moment. I am looking at this applicant and this application and what is being brought forward. It's 80 acres, I believe, is, and that's not.
We don't need to review all of that already, you know, information on the record. I'm simply saying, wouldn't the same concerns apply to residents of the area?
They absolutely, they absolutely. They absolutely do.
As opposed to just creating a condition for a commercial development in the area. And I'm not, I'm not trying to have a debate with you right now, but I just think there are some issues that the commission has dealt with regularly as have other fire protection districts. And there's a, there's a lot to learn and your input is very welcome. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner.
Just a thought, I think the big difference is that if you have a residence, that person is choosing to be there. And if you have a commercial operation, as the Fire Chief pointed out, you have employees who may or may not have as much choice.
Any, we still have public comment open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioner Trey Sherrill, RS Greenery. I want to thank the Fire Chief for his comments and I hope he will stick around. I want to ask about the 10,000 gallon requirement and get more information on that. The, this project, the RS Greenery project was designed to meet requirements of the SRA fire safe regulations. And as they pertain in light of the Lake County Border Supervisors Resolution 2019-124, that resolution was adopting recommendations to address fire safe regulations applicable to outdoor cannabis cultivation. And in light of that, I, it does bring up a concern on how the, it's the condition of approval number four and the fact that it says prior to operation, we have to ensure compliance with Public Resources Code Sections 4290 and 4291. And I just want to maybe add a request, the addition of applicable, applicable sections of 4290 and 4291 as, you know, all of the, all of the code or the sections in the SRA fire safe standards are outlined in the, under item four, but majority of these would not be applicable to this operation as it is a outdoor-only cultivation.
I thank Trey for his input and I would also actually go further and just add wording in number four to be specific that the code sections that are cited there actually come from the California Code of Regulations, Chapter Seven, Article Six, Subchapter Two for fire safe regulations. So, we're going to add, I would request that wording be added as well.
Noted. Thank you. Nicole?
Well, I don't overtly object to the addition of the word applicable. I would note that the, that there isn't, that neither this commission nor any other commission could apply non-applicable rules to a permit holder. So, if it were not applicable, then it by definition would not apply to this particular permit holder. But I understand the confusion that if there are listed terms or listed code sections that would not in fact apply to a particular permit use, that could be confusing.
Thank you.
If I may, there's also just one line that probably should be removed. It's Jerusalem Grade Bridge.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. So, that's, that's probably just a hang, holdover from a.
Not applicable.
It's not applicable. Yes.
Thank you.
Kelly Hunter, I just wanted to say safety and security is everything. I have fire extinguishers all throughout the property, even if I don't have dwellings, just to make sure, I mean, safety for my employees, for me, my family. Yeah, I'll communicate with the chief as need be and for whatever he wants, I can learn and move forward and whatever needs to happen. So. Also, starting at the top or from the top to the bottom of my property, I have full cell service throughout the whole property. So, that isn't even like a question or anything on that scenario for that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yeah, absolutely. We're open. I have a couple more questions. They're pretty simple. You mentioned 200 gallon fabric pots. What's the fabric made of? Is it biodegradable?
I would have to look that up, but yeah, over a period of time, they start to break down, yes. But to exactly see what, what the pots are made of, it's not plastic.
Okay, thanks.
I know that for a fact.
My concern is when the growing is terminated or we can be left with these.
We will remove them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, pretty much mitigating everything, whenever this project is ended or done, we will go and make it look the same and or as, yeah, try to make it look the same as it is when we started. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there an onsite wastewater treatment system?
At the moment, no. I don't think so, no. Wastewater treatment.
Yeah, like a septic system?
Septic, no, not at the moment.
So, how will that work with employees? It's probably in here somewhere, but.
Yeah, I have a, I have a trailer with the porta potty that I can move whatever location, however close to the project needed.
Okay.
And so, it's within distance of them, plus also a structure for any shade needed for any employees.
Okay, thank you.
That's portable, movable, so.
Yeah, those are the.
Pretty much like vineyards.
Social regs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jim, are there any hands in the Zoom room since we still have public comment open?
I don't see any.
Okay, if anyone's in the Zoom room wishing to speak, please raise your hand and we will unmute you. And if there isn't anyone, that's fine too. Any questions or comments from the Commissioners to the applicant or the consultant?
Nothing. There are just a couple inconsistencies, but I don't think they're really relevant. In one part, it said that hours are eight, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM and the management plan says seven to seven, but I'm not hearing that there's a lot of neighbors, so I don't think it's a concern.
Is EICOFF Road a dead end?
Uh, perhaps.
Like it doesn't, it doesn't connect to anything at the very end of it, correct?
There is access.
Sorry, can you go up to the mic just so everybody else can hear your response? I'm sorry.
There is a roundabout at a gate about, about what? Maybe a quarter mile. And, and then also, it also will go through, when they open it, it will go through, all the way through the water mutual, the water company, Lakeport. It goes all the way back through there and you can connect to where the hospital's at.
But it's not something that is, is it locked? Like is it exit?
Yeah, it's locked at certain times of the year, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, that does answer kind of my, there is a, if need be, there is an exit, however.
Need be, yes, there is an exit. That can be open and neighbors do have keys to the, to the gate.
Okay, that might also be something that the Fire Chief would probably like to explore a little bit more. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, well, if no one else wishes to speak on this, I will close public.
Actually, there's a hand.
There's one.
Yep.
All right. Who is it?
It's Betsy Khan.
Good morning, Betsy. We're going to unmute you. If you could just confirm your first and last name for us, please.
Yes, thank you, Betsy Khan from the Essentials Public Information Center. On the end of EICOFF Road, heading over the hill toward the lake itself, that gate is accessed by an easement that's managed by the County Department of Public Works. All property owners have access to that gate. It's used. It's used chiefly when the valley floor is flooded, but it does go through private property that, that is adjacent to and within the Lake County Sanitation District, the North Lakeport wastewater treatment plant, and ends up debauching on East Hill Road. So that's actually where it is. It would be good if everybody understood that and I'm sure Chief Wrights will be looking at that himself. Thank you.
I appreciate your, your clarification on that, Betsy. Thank you. All right, any other hands?
I don't have any.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Just a quick correction on page 12 and page 16 under tribal consultation. Says all 11 tribes located in Lake County on page 12. And on page 16, it says notification to all 12 tribes. So 11 tribes on one and then 12 tribes on the, on page 16. Just something on there. I do want to thank the fire chief for the, for bringing to, to light the evacuation procedures and cell phone dead zones. Whether it applies to this project or any other project, I think it's important to have an escape or emergency plan in place and to make sure that any project that does come, come to us meets the requirements. So I want to thank you for speaking about that.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
I'd also like to, I appreciate the chief's remark and hope that he's a regular presence at our meetings. His comments were very helpful and right on point. And if I could just make a more general point, to circle back to my comments about drought management plans. I believe they're important. I believe they're a essential part of any hydrology report. But my question to the department would be, how do we know if these drought management plans are being implemented as they should be and as the applicants say they will do? If a regional drought emergency is declared, how do we know that those, those commitments made in the drought management plans are actually being implemented?
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Staff?
Should be part of the annual inspection along with all the other conditions of approval.
Thank you. I could just add to that a little bit. We do, our cannabis division, our cannabis program manager lists out and sorts all of the active sites and uses his GIS wizardry skills to sort of chunk them. So this year, we completed all of our active cultivation sites for an annual review. We did modify sort of halfway through for those sites who were saying that they weren't growing this year. And so we, we performed a satellite review of those sites just to make sure that what they were telling us corresponded with what we saw on the ground, but via satellite. So we saved some time there. But our staff is definitely on top of annual site visits. And they're looking not just for are you cultivating or not, but all sorts of details. You know, is there anything new that's not on the project description? Do, do the, the chemicals that are on site correspond? They're just looking for consistency with that project description.
I appreciate that, Mariah. Thank you. It just seems to me that we're in a declared drought period so that drought management requirements should, or standard should be applied in every, in the case of every application. I mean, it's, it's unlikely we'll move out of that status in the course of the next year if la Nina, et cetera, persists. And so my working assumption is all drought management plans should be implemented at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess.
I'd agree with that.
Can you just turn it off? Any, go ahead.
Yeah, too, I guess my comment, you know, and this is again, moving forward, you know, the cumulative impact is, is critical in, in all projects. And so the more knowledge we have of, of some of the hardships that might not fall directly on the applicant, but are just infrastructure issues, it's, it's good to know that so we can plan accordingly and, and make available to the applicant, if they're willing to do the work, you know, that there is some support in terms of what we're doing as the county government and making sure there's compliance, all of the, the monitoring is done in a timely fashion. And again, we don't usually see the results of what that monitoring is. I think in terms of making a decision with our votes, you know, I'd like to know a little more of, and I think we talked about this previously, when there's issues with outer compliance applicants. And so there's just a, there's just a lot in listening to the fire chief who raised a lot of critical points. And at some point, you know, we have to invest the resources and infrastructure to, to make the roads what they need to be. And, and so in terms of that cumulative impact, you know, I, we have to consider that in, in all these applications. And sometimes I feel like we might miss, miss some areas where the expertise that the fire chief provided is critical, you know, and, and so I appreciate he took the time to show up, you know, and, and because hearing what you have to say and reading it are two different things. And so in terms of going forward with this project, I'm, I'm willing to support this project. But in terms of looking at those impacts, we have to do a better job of knowing that before it gets to us and having that information. And then even in terms of our review, you know, being more thorough and having time to ask questions to the planners so that we're more informed. So I guess it's just, I see areas where, and this is to myself of how I'm reviewing projects, that I need to look at things in a little different fashion. So I just wanted to just share that, those thoughts, you know, and, and, but encourage, you know, the work to continue on and to go forward in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brad.
The cannabis manager on Zoom, he wants to speak. Andrew.
Okay. You can unmute Andrew first.
Yes, this is Andrew Amalong, the cannabis program manager.
Good morning.
Just to make a few comments in response to the current conversation. In addition to the annual inspections, we also receive annual monitoring reports from each applicant that they prepare as they wrap up their season. So right now, they should be preparing it to submit by spring of next year for all of their activities. So over, you know, in the downtime over the winter, we can review all of that. And in addition to that, through our inspections, as a large, largely due to the drought conditions, we had over 21 projects opt out of cultivation and 17, well, 21 submitted forms ahead of time to let us know that they were opting out. 17 submitted forms to let us know that they were reducing, they're requesting to reduce their cultivation area because of water concerns. And then we also had a number that we, around 11 or so as of our last record, and I'll have to double check to see if this has increased as we wrapped up our last few inspections of projects that had reduced cultivation due to drought conditions and their drought management plan. So we are seeing quite a bit of evidence that applicants and, well, permities in this case, are, you know, they're, they're operating according to their drought management plans. Not everyone.
That's really helpful information, Andrew. I appreciate that. I, I wasn't aware that you were getting those kinds of updates necessarily from applicants. And to echo Commissioner Brown's point about not always knowing what you are, what information you guys are receiving, those kinds of regular updates, I would welcome very much.
Yes, yeah. And we also, we are doing our due diligence to make sure that those who say they're opting out are in fact opting out.
I have a question while you're on the line, Andrew, if I may. You do annual inspections. After a permit, if somebody opts out of their permit, do you do a follow-up inspection?
Yeah, we have to verify that so that they're basically, when Patrick Sullivan and the tax collection office comes around to, you know, give them their, their invoice for their taxes, that it matches up and that, you know, everything aligns. So.
And are they required to, say, remove any plastic pots or greenhouse structures, things like that?
Not necessarily. I think, you know, some of the opt-outs, we are, especially for our outdoor cultivations, we're using, we're working with code enforcement and our Planet Lab satellite imagery to verify that they are in fact not cultivating, especially to be as efficient as possible with our limited staff resources.
Got it. Thank you.
Hey, Andrew, quick question. Also, if I'm remembering correctly, if an applicant does not grow for two years, I believe their application is revoked. Is that correct?
If, well, if a use permit is not, you know, put into use for two years, then it, it basically, it, oh, the exact term, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on, but basically their, their permit is not issued. It's void at that point. We do consider the fact that if they are submitting the opt-out forms and they are paying their inspection fees, because we still have to spend staff time and resources to verify that they are in fact opting out, we do consider this as actively maintaining their use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel?
Commissioners, that is correct. Article 60 spells out how a permit expires, either on the terms of the permit or if the use itself, any use, not just cannabis use, but any use, if the use itself is not active for two years, the permit will automatically expire.
So how, how Andrew said that if they're opting out, that doesn't count as not using the use permit?
Correct. My understanding is that, well, with any use really, each use would have a different, would be different in the way that it stops functioning.
So would the use be like maintaining the property and continuing to monitor and not having any plants be considered?
Potentially.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I would have to have a specific project in front of me, like an issue with a permit and a specific permit in front of me to determine what criteria apply to that specific permit and whether or not we could make the argument that it has in fact fallen dormant and not, there is no use active for that timeframe. But many uses have very different definitions of non-use. So for example, for a railroad, you would have to pull up the tracks. Simply not having trains go by for 10 years might not void the use. But that is the timeframe that, that, under the Article 60 for the ordinance, that if, if the use ceases for two years, then the permit expires.
I'd like to point out some language that was in one of the projects today that I wanted to comment earlier.
One of the projects today? If we, if we've already heard the item, then?
It's not relevant to the specific project. It's just a piece of language that I thought was really good that I haven't seen in other, I haven't seen in all the projects. And I just want to read it quickly. It was just a sentence that I thought we should include in every project. "The site shall be restored to its original state within six months of the expiration of the use permit. Termination of use or abandonment of the site, the applicant shall enter into a site restoration agreement subject to the approval of the community development director or their designee."
Commissioner, are you recommending that be added to the permit in front of you at the moment?
That'd be awesome.
I believe the applicant has indicated that he does, he would plan to remediate, so it seems relevant.
I agree. Okay. So that's not a motion. That's just something that we're just taking note of and we will address it during, if and when there's a motion made, correct?
Correct. You'd address it as amended.
Thank you.
Whoever makes the motion would add that language, reference that language or say as amended. And then if the commissioners present agree, then you would vote for that motion with the language included. If you do not, then you would vote not.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. All right. Any other discussion or concerns regarding the use permit? This is in my district, so I unfortunately can't make a motion.
I'd be happy to offer the motion on your behalf, Adam Chair.
I appreciate you, Commissioner Hess. And I did remember I could actually pass the gavel, I think.
Well, why bother? It's heavy.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm, I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 21-05, applied for by RS Greenery on property located at 6243 EICOFF Road, Upper Lake. APNs 003-046-02 and 003-046-78 will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration. IS 21-05 shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated November 17, 2022 and as amended here today.
Before anyone seconds that, I just want to confirm or find, so it says Upper Lake from EICOFF. I know it was close to the Nissus Cern or the boundary, but I do believe the APN should state Lakeport. Is that correct?
I think, yeah, from a mailing address point of view, yes.
Okay, just, I just want to make sure that the APN that was noted is a Lakeport parcel number. Okay.
Well, no, not the city of Lakeport, it's a county.
Well, sure, but the ad, it'll actually read nine, it'll read Lakeport, not Upper Lake. Because the way he just read it on, on the motion, it says Upper Lake. So that must have been a typo. I just want to make sure it's not a typo or if it is a typo, that we correct it to state Lakeport as opposed to Upper Lake.
I think if the APN is correct, that's more-
Oh, that, that's more, that's more important. I mean, I, my concern is when they read 6243 EICOFF Road, Upper Lake, it should be Lakeport. So confirming that the address does state Lakeport as per the parcel number and the tax assessor's data. So let's just, we're just going to correct Commissioner Hess in reading the Upper Lake as to Lakeport.
Yes, so confirmed by GIS, that is a Lakeport.
Motion as further amended.
Thank you. And then just moving forward, Commissioner Hess, there's a heads up on the second part as well.
Got it. Thanks.
So we have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second, please?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 21-05, applied for by RS Greenery on property located at 6243 EICOFF Road, Upper Lake, California 954, Lakeport, California, further described in this motion, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1 IIGII of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and based on the findings listed in the staff report dated November 17, 2022 and as amended here today.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day. Thank you for staff and the applicant and your time. Moving on to our department update. Director Turner?
Thank you. The first item before you is approval of revised Lake County Planning Commission bylaws. Instead of a working draft, conceptual only, we now have a draft for you to sort of sink your teeth into. The changes I just wanted to point out, we are making reference to Rosenberg's Rules of Order. This is more appropriate for smaller groups, whereas the, what was the other name? No, it's gone. Roberts Rules. Roberts Rules of Order tend to be appropriate for larger groups like large boards. We have an addition for the possibility of alternate commissioners. So we're hoping to get your recommendation regarding that matter specifically. There are a few other items that are added for clarity specific to quorum and taking action when we have less than a full body. And also reconsideration of items that the planning commission has already acted on, as well as a new part for ex parte communications to add clarity to keep the communications above board in when items are going to come before the planning commission. Also, I would defer to Nicole- the planning commission. Also, I would defer to, um, Nicole for additional advisement regarding county council.
Thank you. Uh, I have a number of questions that were submitted and, uh, they were submitted, so you'll bear with me. Um, they were submitted for the draft that was posted to the prior meeting. And between then and the draft that was posted today, there have been some amendments that might have, that address a number of the questions, but I'm going to go through it anyway, so that, um, you're aware of what the concerns were, what the changes were. And, um, then your commission can discuss what language you think would be most appropriate. I would also recommend that rather than, um, that, rather than, uh, taking staff's recommendation today of recommending to the board of supervisors, uh, just that, um, the ordinance be changed to allow for alternates, but that you, if there are any changes today, that you allow staff to make those amendments, present you with a final draft in December. And then at that point, your commission could then adopt conditioned on, um, the board of supervisors approving, uh, and adopting an ordinance amendment for alternates. And then it wouldn't, if they do that, if the board does in fact do that, then, um, you would not have to see it again until the next review of your, um, bylaws. That's just food for thought. Otherwise, you could take staff's recommendation, um, of, of simply recommending to the board, uh, that they adopt, that they change the ordinance and adopt alternates, and then it would come back to you after that. Um, but it seems just a little bit cleaner to do it, where we make the amendments that you might propose today, bring it back in December, you adopt conditionally, and then recommend it to the board. Uh, so, and again, bear with me, there's a little bit of a disjoint between the references for the questions and the current draft. So I'm going to have to go through where those changes are. First, uh, we'll start at the beginning at around article two for, excuse me, article three, which was a previously this particular, these questions related to language that was included in the prior section of article two. It's now in article three. Um, there's a concern about whether or not, uh, alternates under section six, whether or not alternates are allowed to go on site visits. Uh, the thing with alternates, it is, they are treated differently in various counties. The way it's been written here, it is one alternate for each district that is, that is proposed in this structure of bylaws. Uh, there are also, uh, counties that will, um, have simply two alternates that will fill in for anyone, and the alternates are numbered one and two, and they are pointed based on their number one or two. And so those alternates, when there are a lesser number of alternates than commission members, uh, often attend all the meetings in case they need to fill in. What we've done here, because the recommendation was for one alternate per, um, uh, per district, that can get unwieldy and it can get, um, a little costly if you're asking people for their extra time to just sit there on the off chance. So we, that's why we've put in places here, uh, criteria of notifying, that sitting commissioners notify in advance of any absences and/or, um, uh, disqualifications. So if there's a conflict and you feel that you would need to, um, to remove yourself from a vote, then we would have advanced notice. We could notify an alternate and an alternate could appear at the meeting. Um, so, yes, alternates would be allowed to go on, um, on-site visits. We do have a section, uh, for site visits. It relates to site visits and the current bylaws do in fact also have the, have a section for site visits. They call it field trips, uh, for, I think it's the Monday, first Monday of the month, I think, first or second Monday? Anyhow, uh, that would be for a noticed commission field trip or site visit, where you would attend and it would be effectively largely a meeting, I would think, if all of you go. Brown Act rules are triggered here. If there are site visits, then commissioners would need to either go in groups of two or under if you do go outside of the field trip day. And, um, because otherwise, any, any number more greater than that would trigger Brown Act rule meeting requirements. And as we'll discuss later, even if you do attend sites yourself or in groups of two, there are extra criteria requirements in order to make sure that we meet Brown Act requirements and we avoid ex parte communication violations. And we'll get to that when we get, when we move forward in the, in the draft bylaws. Are alternates expected to be up to speed each week on all projects? If they're attending each week, then yes. If they have advanced enough notice, then they would be able to become, um, familiar with the projects that are on for the day that they're, that they are filling in. So that would depend on the structure that your commission adopts for your bylaws and what you think would work best. Could the commission transfer the alternate PC to the primary PC if the primary PC has too many absences? No. The planning commission does not determine the members of its commission. The board does. So arguably, if a, if the board has determined that a planning commissioner is not as engaged in the role as is necessary, then the board would make the determination and go through the process of removing that planning commissioner, since they are the ones who appointed that planning commissioner. And then they would decide who would then take that role. It wouldn't automatically be any alternates that are appointed. It could be, since they would likely have been deemed to qualify since they're filling in. But this commission would have no control over that. Also, on the, um, there's a question about language on the line here. Um, in the very last sentence, if the absent regular commissioner arrives subsequent, um, arrives subsequently to the appointment of the alternate. So say a commissioner says, has said in advance, I will be absent. An alternate shows up to take, to take their, their role for that day. If the planning, if that particular appointed planning commissioner then arrives to the meeting because they're, for whatever, they're, they're, they felt better, or their meeting, whatever conflict they had ended sooner or just didn't happen, um, they could not then take their seat. The alternate would fill in for that meeting. And that's what that sentence means. That person shall not participate as a voting member, meaning that that person, the regular commissioner who arrives later, will not participate, um, in the meeting once the alternate has seated, has been seated. Okay. And of course, if any of you have any questions about anything I haven't touched on, then by all means ask.
Oh, I have a question about the language there. Immediately in, in my mind, uh, if I'm fifteen minutes late because of traffic, uh, and the alternate is seated, should I turn around and go home? And how do we write that?
Where are you coming from that you'd be?
Hypothetical.
Yeah. Uh, no, I understand. If there's a, if there's a conflict and you call in and you state that you won't be, that you'll be late. Um, I think in that circumstance, if, if you were unaware, since we're dealing with hypotheticals, if you were unaware and you were on your way for that day, I think the expectation would be that you would be present because you hadn't notified the commission that you would not. And therefore, a, an alternate would not have been notified to attend. So either the commission would be less one person, or, um, it would delay to either wait for you or the, um, the alternate, depending on the type of delay. That would be up to the chair, I would imagine, in that whether or not it would, the commission would continue and begin its, its day's business if there was a quorum, um, which there should be if, if alternates are an option. So, then the meeting could move forward, even if a commissioner were late.
Well, I'm trying to figure out a way to write this so that it's more clear, or perhaps that's a reason, um, or, or let me put, put the question to you this way. Uh, if we nix that line?
The alternate from, uh, the one where it says that that person shall not participate as a voting member?
Right.
Okay.
If the absent regular commissioner arrives subsequently, the commissioner shall participate as a voting. What are the implications of changing it to read that way?
Well, um, if the meeting has begun and you have an alternate that's already participating in deliberations, then you have a commissioner that shows up later.
Item, maybe. I'm just trying to figure out how to make it so that we can just refer to the document and know how to proceed.
Uh, and it isn't clear that if, if the commissioner is, shows up subsequent to the alternate taking their seat, that they cannot participate in the meeting?
Well, I'm trying to avoid that being late issue. It's going to happen.
I don't think that being late issue can be avoided. Um, I agree with Commissioner Field. I think there, I, I don't want to disrupt this line of conversation, but I think there's potential for enormous confusion with, with alternates, especially if there are five. And a lot of that has to do with last minute changes, which may require an alternate who must, might work full-time to drop everything and somehow come up to speed and tackle a staff report at the, at the last minute. I'm not so sure that an alternate put in that kind of situation can contribute much more than an absent commissioner line on that particular day. And I don't think having only four commissioners present hamstrings the commission in any way. I also wonder with, um, five alternates and five sitting commissioners, if we're just adding a layer of confusion and bureaucracy and a whole new, um, track for ex parte communications between a sitting commissioner and, and, and an alternate who's trying to get up to speed. Uh, I have a lot of questions about that and I just don't want to fix something that ain't broken.
I completely agree with you, Commissioner Hess. And I've thought about it a little bit, and I think that, uh, one solution we might consider is, um, to reword section four, so that we have a, an alternate who is expected to come to every meeting and read all the preparatory materials before every meeting, and maybe even show up at every meeting. Um, from what I've seen, it's pretty unusual for us to have all five members here at one time. So I don't think that's too much to ask. I agree that having five alternates doesn't provide enough continuity for each person. Um, so anyway, I would propose that we have an alternate and perhaps a sub-alternate, but that the alternate at least is expected to be up to speed on all of the issues at all times. And that furthermore, we, uh, change the line in section six, so that if the commissioner does show up and is only late for whatever reason, traffic or something like that, then at the next item, that commissioner takes the seat that the alternate had been, uh, in. Does that make sense? Does anyone have any comments about that?
Um, I, I understand what, what point you're trying to get across. Um, it makes sense to me. Um, and as, as someone who chairs the meetings, um, currently, I, I could see that potentially happening and having the alternate maybe sit in if there was already, we were already into an agenda item. And then, um, once that, um, decision was made and that item is no longer on the table, um, to have the original appointed commissioner take their seat, um, would be the right way to go. And I also echo Commissioner Hess and, uh, Commissioner Fields with the five alternates. That's a little, um, excessive for me, I guess you could say. Um, having one that is present and that we know is, you know, current on all matters and has read all the information and, um, reports, I think it's a great idea to have, um, at least one. Um, and if not, uh, one main alternate and then another fill in if needed.
I agree with Commissioner Field in, uh, in having, um, one alternate be present and prepared, um, at the beginning of every meeting. Um, however, I don't agree with switching seats. I feel like if you're not here in time, then you're not prepared, um, for the meeting. Therefore, the alternate would take that spot, uh, for the remainder of the meeting. Um, yeah. That's, um, assuming that the, that the person is prepared, so they would do a, a better job, uh, if they're already here, present on time to, to fill in the seat.
So in that case, let's say I am delayed because of my own stupidity or my coffee boiled, whatever reason, uh, should I text the chair and say, I'm coming, but I'm going to be late? Or?
I, I would think at that point, if you're late and we already have an alternate in place that's already here, you know, um, consider what, uh, Commissioner Chavez said and just if they're here ready to go and it's just kind of going to roll that way, um, you know, you might have that as like an excused absence, if you will.
Right. I, I would go with whatever, um, Commissioner Chavez, um, feels is appropriate. I, I think he has the farthest to travel among us.
Probably.
Commissioners, uh, it is not uncommon for commissions to have just two alternates who then attend every meeting so that they are abreast of all the issues. And, um, they also, uh, in section five, there's also a requirement, and we can change the in writing part to include by mail or, or email or phone, um, that any chair, any member who would be absent would then, would notify the commission regardless of whether it's last minute or prior to, so that the alternate, so that an alternate can be, and if an alternate is required to attend, if there are only two, for example, um, then they would be here to fill in at that time.
Commissioner Chavez, do you feel strongly about one or two alternates?
Versus five?
Well, definitely one. Two would be even better, um, in the case that two of us are missing.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah. Due to either illness or flat tire or whatever other thing could happen.
And are, are these said alternates going to be, uh, trying to attend in chambers? Or are they going to be via Zoom? Does it really, is there, is there a precedence on, or like a preference on how you would, how we would like them to be present?
They would, if they are, if they are to fill in for an absent commissioner, they would need to meet the Brown Act requirements.
Okay.
And so if one of the AB three-sixty-one rules doesn't apply, for example, there isn't an emergency to which their absence applied, um, then, then yes, they would need to be present here.
So, so I guess the, the question I have is, is what is the threshold for needing the alternate? If there's only going to be two scheduled commissioners showing up, and then we need a third to conduct the meeting, um, that to me is, is important. Now, if, you know, you just want a, a full commission every time, then to me, that's, that's a little too much in terms of bureaucracy for me. Um, because ideally, all of the commissioners here should have some knowledge of the district they're representing. And so to just bring two in from anywhere, you remove that knowledge. And, and I think that's something that each commissioner brings to the table, being within that community and in that district. And so I have a hard time of, um, cause life happens, you know, and, and, uh, if it's just to keep the machine going, then, you know, I have a, I have a concern with that, you know, and, and as I, I look at things, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, you know, commitments I, I juggle, you know, to, to be here and that we, we all do, you know. And so, um, you know, whether you have a, you know, like today I have a, a IEP meeting at two, you know, and if the meeting ran, ran past that, you know, I would have to leave. And, and then where would that be as, as alternate coming on if we have to go a full day, you know? And, and so there's things that happen, you know, and, and I know the times when I'm not going to be here. Um, I tried to provide notice to Jim and I don't know if that's the correct point of contact, you know, and, or texting another commission. I mean, I don't, I, I prefer not to have anybody else's number, so that way there's no other communication going on outside of when we come here. But I know there's been times where I think, uh, counsel has informed us that if we're all on the same email, then we potentially could be email thread that, that could be considered a meeting, you know? So I think establishing, um, protocol, you know, I, I know one of the times I was sick and couldn't zoom in because it wasn't COVID-related, but I still didn't want to come in. Um, and that was something where I tried to get better in time to get to the meeting, but I just couldn't, you know? And, and so it was a kind of last minute, um, email to Jim, but hey, I'm not going to make it, you know? And so I, I think in that situation, if we do have four commissioners, there's no need to bring in an alternate, you know, that we have four. We can conduct the meeting and business can be conducted. And so sometimes I think, you know, there's, I guess finding that ground where it's important and when it's excessive, you know? And that's kind of what my thought is, you know, and, and, um, and I, I think in a situation, yeah, if there's going to be three people missing, we need, we need an alternate to conduct the meeting. But then who picks those alternates? You know, does the? Does the Board of Supervisors ultimately say, "Yeah, these are the candidates", and what is the selection process, you know? And I think that's, I think that's kind of hard when you're supposed to be representing the district, you know. So that's kind of where, you know, my thoughts are and just kind of thinking about how to navigate. Because I do feel it's important that the meeting does happen. But life does happen as well for us. And in a situation where you only have two confirmed, then yeah, I would say we need an alternate, you know. But if it's to have five commissioners at every meeting, I think there can be issues with a whole lot of things going on, you know. And I would hate for a commissioner to be a few minutes late, but there's an alternate waiting in the audience and saying, "Okay, they're late. I'm going to take my seat", you know, and because it's, it could cause conflict, you know. And I think that's something I wouldn't want to see. But if it's a notice where you're saying, "Yeah, like I can't be there for five of the six items", then yeah, stay home and let's alternate, do the business. So I think just finding what the threshold needs to be, how that gets determined is important, you know. And are we properly noticing, providing notice if we're not going to make it? You know, and I'm just not sure. I've never been directed on who's my point of contact. To do that, I just assumed it was Jim, you know. So that's kind of my comments, I guess, at this point.
Well, there's a lot there. Let me know if I missed something, and I haven't addressed a concern. First and foremost, the commission, yes, there's a risk that if you include everybody in a chain email for all of the commissioners in a chain email, there is a risk of creating a meeting if you're discussing anything that relates to the business of the commission. However, if it's administrative, like absence-related, you could include everybody. If you're concerned that that may get you into a habit or lead you to have like an Outlook thing pop up where you end up accidentally emailing everybody when you don't intend to, then you can simply email the chair and let them know, "I will not be here for this particular meeting". And then that eliminates the risk of emailing everybody. As for alternates, the reason five were suggested was because that very concern came up and that you wouldn't want to run into a scenario where there are two appointed who, then the remaining districts who do not have a member amongst the two would then be without a representative voice on the commission. And that was the concern, and that's why the number of five was first recommended. It is not set in stone. Your commission can determine that less alternates are appropriate. The body that will appoint any alternates, the body that appoints every one of you is the board. So even though your district representatives may recommend you as a member of the commission, the board could very well say as a body, "No, we don't want to appoint that person". So each of you and all the alternates would be appointed by the board. What we're trying to do here is not to create a full commission every time. What we're trying to do here is to create a set of, a structure and a set of rules that allows for the commission to perform its purpose and its business. And the best way to do that, at a minimum, by law, there has to be a quorum. So that is what we're trying to achieve here at minimum. Ideally, we would want to avoid scenarios where we have two-to-two vote risks, which is four members present, but that's still better than requiring a three-person unanimous vote for, when there's just a quorum present.
Nicole, may I weigh in there?
Sure.
And just ask a question. Why? Why are those things better? In the six years I've been a commissioner, we have never had a situation where there has been a lack of a quorum, meaning no commissioners present or only two. And we have, and there's a system for dealing with that, for commissioners, three commissioners. Maybe it looks odd sometimes to have less than a full group of commissioners up in the dais, but I don't believe that the work of the commission has been deeply harmed or held back, just with the current arrangement.
Right. Nobody's saying that this commission is lacking in any way. The bylaws were 20-some-odd years old.
I didn't mean it that way.
No, 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 I know. I know you don't, but this commission has been great, and you have been making it through all the items that have been presented to you, and you've been doing a fabulous job with that. The bylaws needed to be updated. They have not been revisited or updated for, what is it, 20-some-odd years? About that. And so it was about time. And we were researching what various other entities do and what worked for them. One of the things that did come up so that they did not find themselves in scenarios where they did have less than a quorum or they had to reach an unanimous vote. In any scenario that it made, they adopted an alternate system. So it seemed like a positive way to address absences or potential absences or potential conflicts that may come to the commission in the course of the commission's business. So that's why it was recommended. The reason, as I said, that five were recommended was because there was a concern expressed that if there were only two or one, that not all of the districts would have a voice if their particular district member was missing and the alternate filled in for them.
But there's also now a provision in the draft bylaws for reconsideration. And if people feel a 4-4 vote came to a wrong conclusion, a denial perhaps, why doesn't the reconsideration portion of the new bylaws address those concerns?
Yes, we're going to get to the reconsideration. There's been a little bit of shift between the last draft and this one. Reconsideration has been amended to match the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. It would be in that particular day. It wouldn't be later because we run up on conflicts with other deadlines and appeals periods and things like that. So we could not make it work to where it would be allowable at the next meeting. If your commission were a commission that met more often, we could probably do the meeting of in the next meeting, but we just could not make that work for a body that meets every other week. So that was too far of a time span. So we did change that. So the reconsideration, as we'll discuss going down the line of questions, was amended to be just for the day of the decision that was made or the item that was heard. And so if, so if a person were, so the people who were present for that meeting, whether they were an alternate or an actual, or an appointed voting member of the commission, would be the same people who voted on the item as well as any reconsideration.
But how does a 4-4 commission that would split their vote and result in the denial of an application, how does that hinder or negatively impact the work of the commission? The denied applicant would still have the opportunity to appeal.
You are correct. There are rules that, outside of these bylaws, that would still apply, that would address certain scenarios. And, but, that is correct. A 4-4 would be the result of a denial, and then the person could then appeal. Yes.
Right, without all of these other confusing layers.
Potentially, yes. But what we were trying to do here was to provide a method by which, when the commission finds itself in a situation in which there are less members than ideal, than preferred, because this commission is designed to have a five-member decision-making body so that there is a plethora of voices and opinions and viewpoints. It's, the business of the commission is hampered with less members present, if that makes sense. And again, that leads into why we were recommending five as opposed to just two. Two does practically speaking manage, function a little bit more smoothly than five. And I personally have no preference for either two or five. It is your commission's decision. It's just that the recommendation was for five was so that the purpose of the commission, it's the plethora of voices from each district would still be maintained if a person were absent or unable to participate in the vote.
I could see how both sides of this argument, either having alternates or not. For example, in my district, it's almost kind of rare to have items because of the jurisdiction of City of Clearlake overtaking most of the area that I represent. Therefore, for example, an alternate from my area, I would probably with somebody from a different district, that's the word I was looking for. I was like, where is it? So taking that into thought. And then, like Commissioner Hess was saying, that if we have two, two, then it just, then it can just get. Yeah, so I could be 50-50 on the whole thing. So it's whether we want to just make a change to the bylaws or not. It's, you know, depending on how much involved we want to get into making this consideration.
I'd like to.
A recommendation, sorry.
Say something. First of all, I really respect what Commissioner Brown says, but I feel that, A, having more voices is a more robust discussion. So the more voices up here, the better, in my opinion. Number two, when I first started here, I asked a lot of questions about representing District 5. And I was told that I do not have a constituency, that I am supposed to represent the entire county, and that's how I have acted. I feel that each planning commissioner represents the county as a whole. So I guess what I'm saying is that I've written some language that would, I think would work, that changes Section 4 a little bit, and that's the only change I would recommend. So maybe I can just give us something to either vote on or not vote. It's really nice, by the way, that we're all five here to make this decision right now.
Yeah, just to make it clear, you have not been asked, and it hasn't been noticed, that you'll be voting on anything today. Except for a recommendation to the board. If you choose to make changes today as sort of a consensus, we can bring them back to you in December, staff can, and then you can vote on those changes then.
I thought this was an action item, so does that?
It is, the item, if you're going to do anything, it would be, the recommendation is that the planning commission make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that the municipal code, Chapter 2, Article 8, be amended to allow for the adoption of planning commission alternates. You will not be making a decision on the bylaws today, which is why I recommended that you continue the item with the changes proposed today so that staff can bring back a final draft, and then you can then notice it for action.
That sounds great.
And then you can adopt it, if you want alternates, with the changes, conditioned on the board adopting, approving an ordinance change for. And then if the board approves an ordinance change for alternates, then you will have already adopted the bylaws. If they do not, then we would come back with a draft that has the alternates option removed.
Okay, you kind of lost me there.
So today, if you are to take action, what has been noticed is a recommendation to the board that they change the ordinance to allow for adoption of alternates.
I would move that we do that with the following amendment.
Just a minute.
Okay.
So they won't be reviewing, based on that recommendation, the board will not be reviewing your bylaws. They will simply be addressing whether or not alternates are a good idea. So my recommendation is that you actually provide them with completed bylaws with what your commission wants as the language in the bylaws and how you want it to look.
Which is what I'm trying to do.
Right, but we can't do that today because that hasn't been noticed for today.
It hasn't?
No. The only thing that's been noticed for today is a recommendation that the board change the municipal code in order to adopt planning commission alternates. What I'm recommending is continuing the item to December, to the meeting in December, to where staff would bring you, based on the changes today, would bring your commission a complete draft that you would then adopt.
We change other things, we amend other things when we make, when we vote on things. Why can't we?
You wouldn't be voting on this today, though. So what would happen is, is you could make changes, and then staff could provide this draft that you haven't acted on to the board and say, "This is what's been reviewed by the commission, but no action's been taken". And then it would come back after the board makes its decision to you to adopt. My recommendation, I think, seems, is a little cleaner in that your changes will be incorporated, you will take action in December, adopting it conditioned on the board action. And then it would go to the board, and once the board acts, that's it. It doesn't have to come back to you.
Okay, so I think, let me just try to be another voice, that if there are things that you would like to change, like for instance, your thing that you would like to read on Section 4, those are all things that we can discuss now to have staff take that direction from what we're discussing now. And then they'll draft another ordinance or another draft for us to look at once she can notice it publicly, and then they'll make all the changes, right? So when we look at it again, it'll have the said changes, and then we're able to make a actual motion on that, and then it goes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sometimes it just, because I can hear what she's saying, but if I had to recite what she was saying, it wouldn't make any sense. So that's what comes through my brain, so.
So you can make.
Hope that's helpful.
Yes, you can, and we expected that you make amendments today to the language of the bylaws because they are your bylaws and they need to work for your business and your process. But because it wasn't noticed, we didn't anticipate noticing it for an adoption until after the board had addressed it, then they can't be adopted today with changes.
Okay, so I would propose that we, as a commission, direct staff to change the draft as I propose. I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks of it before, I mean, I don't.
I think maybe a good starting point would be to read what changes you want to make to Section 4, and then we can kind of see where we're all at.
Yeah, so then there could be a discussion. And then if there's a consensus, it doesn't have to be a motion because you're not taking action. If there's a consensus that that's the language you'd like to see, staff can put it into the bylaws. We'll bring it back as a final draft in December. And then you can vote on that language as officially the bylaws for the planning commission.
Okay.
Do you want to read what you have for Section 4, what changes you have, or suggestions?
Yeah, it's more of a suggestion.
Okay.
"The Board of Supervisors may appoint an alternate and a subalternate member to serve in place of any regular member when the regular member is absent or disqualified from participating in a meeting of the commission. Alternates and subalternates shall serve for terms so designated by the Board of Supervisors."
So your main change on that would be?
It would make it at large, so there'd just be one alternate and one subalternate.
As opposed.
And then I'm.
Could you read that again?
I can just give it to you.
Okay, either way.
So then I'm ditching the idea of changing Section 6 because of what, the point that Commissioner Burdo made. That's it.
Could you read number four again?
"The Board of Supervisors may appoint an alternate and a subalternate member to serve in place of any regular member when the regular member is absent or disqualified from participating in a meeting of the commission. Alternates and subalternates shall serve for terms so designated by the Board of Supervisors."
Subalternates. Are you envisioning like an alternate one and two?
I'm thinking alternate and subalternate, so.
Okay, so.
There's a number one and a number.
Like a name, and then if that person.
Yeah, then it goes to the next person.
And when, are you envisioning that the language above, "The Board of Supervisors may appoint an alternate member to serve in place of the regular member when the regular member is absent"?
Any regular member.
How are you seeing that play out?
So what I mean is, we talked about having somebody at large. So what I'm envisioning is having an alternate, whether there's two, three, or four people here, regular commissioners, that alternate jumps in when there's any person missing from the commission.
In that case, we would not necessarily have five members present, even including alternates.
Correct.
Which sort of brings us back to where we can find ourselves today, at a meeting without a full complement of voting members.
By full complement, you mean a quorum?
I mean, five. I mean, even with just one or two alternates in play, I can still see likely scenarios where we will not have five commissioners sitting, even if the alternates are included. So, I'm not sure-
Correct.
I'm still not sold on the idea of alternates. I think it's a potential Pandora's Box in terms of the relationship between a supervisor and a sitting commissioner and an alternate, and it's creating layers of potential confusion that don't exist currently.
So, the goal is not, my understanding of the goal of alternates is not to, I mean, well, if you have one alternate per sitting member, then naturally, the result of that would be that you would always have a five-person commission, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. The goal here isn't to-
Well, not necessarily, because if you're, if I couldn't make it, and my alternate couldn't make it-
That is true.
There would only be four.
That is true, and there are rules that would govern, and yes, Commissioner Hess is correct, there are rules that do and will continue to govern the number of members that are present at any particular meeting.
Right, nothing else changes.
And, the goal here wasn't to, it wasn't to fix a massively big problem, the goal here was to provide the commission a positive way to allow it to continue its business in as complete a manner as possible, as a complete a body as possible. So, even if that means that an alternate will only make up a quorum, but if you have two alternates, then that means that at a minimum, you'll have four people present at any given meeting. And if that allows the commission to have a broader voice than it otherwise would, had there not been alternates, or allowed them to carry on a meeting that it otherwise would not have, then that's a positive outcome. The goal isn't to prevent all absences, or to prevent all scenarios in which there will be less than the full complement of five. The goal here is to provide the commission every opportunity to complete its business in as full a decision-making body as possible.
There are meetings where I feel like I wish we had a full commission, but then again, like Commissioner Hess said, I mean, that's kind of like the beauty of being a commissioner, that you want to come here to make the decision whether you can make it or not, if any scenario arrives on the road, or health, or whatever it may be, but that's the beauty of having a supervisor and a commissioner. So, I definitely see the, kind of the confusion that would arise by having alternates, and then whether it be one or two, and then from, you know, kind of like, from what district would they be chosen from, and all of that, so I guess I would lean more towards not having alternates, and just going off of, just having us want to show up and mix, not the pressure, but like, wanting to come and sit on our chairs and do, conduct our business.
So, I don't see as great of a conflict possibility, at least at the board level, because the board appoints all commissioners, and would be the body that appoints all the alternates. So, they would have to, at their level, in their meeting, agree on who the two alternates would be. So, as a body, they would have to appoint a person, or people. So, I don't see as great of a conflict in that instance. The person who, the people who would be alternates would not, would not be present, would not be filling in for absent commissioners all the time. This is not intended to be a full-time position. They are not an alternate, they are not a permanent echo of any of the commissioners. So, that is not their role. Their role is to fill in and allow the commission to do, in a positive manner, its business as intended, as a complete a body as possible, at any given time, in which there is an instance in which a commissioner who has been appointed cannot make it, or has a conflict that doesn't allow them to participate.
I don't mean to sound like I'm being contrary, just to be contrary, but couldn't we make the same argument about the Board of Supervisors itself? I mean, I-
There was only three present on Tuesday.
Well, no, just let me make my point, that there's no expectation that there will always be a full complement of sitting supervisors at every meeting, and there's no discussion of alternates there, which I wouldn't support parenthetically, but I'm just not sold on the need for more than two alternates on the commission, and not necessarily any at all. And I don't mean to just bog down the conversation, but I'm just not, I have to be honest, I'm just not there yet.
The board members are elected officials, so alternates would not be an option there, and they couldn't create that as an option. The commission, however-
I think the point that, I don't think anybody thinks the work of the board has suffered on those occasions where they haven't had all five board members present.
I'm not suggesting, right, and I don't want to give anyone the impression that I'm suggesting that the commission is suffering. The, any decision-making body that is missing members is not making a decision with the complete complement of people that are intended, or voices that are intended when that decision is made. So, in that sense, the body is diminished a little bit. However, this commission, unlike many other commissions in other municipalities, has a broader scope of authority. You have a greater review authority and decision-making authority than other complements, or other parallels of your commission do. And the decisions you make have long-ranging impacts, and they have, and they are complex, and they are, and they are very impactful. So-
Consequential.
And your commission was designed to be a five-person body. By statute, it has to be a minimum of five people.
I think you make a really good point. That's why we're doing this, is it's very unusual for us to have five people, and I agree with you, Commissioner Hess, that we don't really need more than two, and for the purpose of continuity is more important. In fact, I think that having an alternate for each member would be bad.
I agree, I agree with that.
So, I'm proposing that we have an alternate and a subalternate, in order to increase the robustness of the conversation.
I respect that. I simply don't agree. I don't think, I think it's fixing a problem that doesn't actually exist, and of course, five full-throated commission voices are always useful, but I just, I hope we don't come to regret this new structure, and find it onerous, and duplicative, and bureaucratic.
I feel like every time someone says something, it opens up a new door-
Yeah.
For me, like, it's either, it's either we have five alternates, or we have none. That's kind of like how I'm-
That's where you're at now?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
No, but I agree definitely with having all five, for that reason, but the comment that you made earlier regarding, as a planning commissioner, we do represent our districts, but at the same time, we are representing the county as a whole, so-
Yeah, I don't feel like I represent my district. I mean, I have property in three different districts, so I don't feel that, I just don't feel that. I feel like, I love the north side of the lake just as much as, do you know what I mean? I guess it's just my personal feeling. I feel that I represent Lake County.
Yeah, and I definitely agree with that, and for myself, I work all around the lake, so it's kind of, I appreciate the beauty, and everything about every single part of Lake County, so it's, like you say, we are representing Lake County as a whole, but it just so happens that we live in certain areas that defines what district we come from, but at the end of the day, we are representing Lake County. I don't know if that led anywhere.
No, I agree with you, Commissioner Chavez, that's true, but, and I don't think, it doesn't hurt that we have expertise in all of these particular areas. There's been an informal tradition on the commission ever since I joined, that a district makes a difference in terms of what the staff report is before us, meaning that if it's in District Five, perhaps the District Five commissioner, if he or she supports that particular application, makes the motion, deferring to each other regionally in that sense, rather than in terms of authority.
Well, I'd like to maybe wrap up this discussion. I think that Commissioner, I think Commissioner Hess has been on the commission a lot longer than I have, so I certainly have a lot of respect for his opinion, and if he doesn't feel this is necessary, then perhaps it isn't. It doesn't sound like we have consensus in, anyway, so.
Well, how will we package this conversation in terms of further amending the draft bylaws? My voice is just one voice. If the other participating commissioners today want to create two or five, I respect that, although I don't think I could support five, and I'm still not even sure I could support two. But if the consensus is four to one, three to two, that we report, you know, this as an amendment to the draft document, I can live with that. I was just stating my point of view.
So, perhaps I might suggest that your commission determine first whether or not alternates are something your commission as a whole would like to have as an option, and then, once you determine whether or not alternates are something you would like to have, how many?
Well, that doesn't work for me, because I don't think we should have five. I think we should have two. I feel pretty strongly about that.
Okay, so we have one that wants two. Commissioner Brown?
I support not having any alternates.
Fair enough. Commissioner Hess?
I am agreeing with my colleague, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, Commissioner Chavez?
Well-
It's just, it's just for discussion, it's not like we're voting, we're just trying, I'm trying to figure out where everyone is.
Yeah, I either said-
Five minutes ago, you were sure.
Zero or five, so if the commission leans towards having none, then that's where I would lean towards.
And, me personally, I'm at a point where, if it, I mean, as of right now, I don't feel like an alternate, any alternate is, you know, any, it's not a necessity, it's not something we need, really, but I'm not against revisiting it in the future. So, if we're at a consensus, if you will, to not have any alternates at this time, and we want to make that change, we can lean that way.
So, might I suggest then, since it's four, it's a consensus of four commissioners preferring not to have alternates, an option of alternates, that you allow staff to redraft the bylaws without that option-
Okay.
And bring it to you, you could continue this item, potentially, and then we could bring you a draft without alternates in it, in December.
Okay, so either way, this is going to be redone, and put in front of us to actually make a decision to get it off to the board.
Well, you won't need to get it to the board if there are no alternates-
Okay.
Because your bylaws state that the planning commission will approve adoptions, and of new or amended bylaws, and at a four to five vote, and there is nothing in the ordinance that requires the board to approve it as well.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Which is unusual.
Okay.
Yeah. So, is there anything further, anything? Well, there would need to be a continuance of the items, so we could bring it, so staff could bring it back, in, what is it, December fifteenth?
Seventh, fifteenth?
Fifteen.
Were there any other things to discuss about this?
Unless you would like to, well, a number of other, there are a number of other questions that we could go over. The bulk of them pertain to the application of alternates. Not all of them do, but the vast majority of them do, and if you are not going to move forward as a commission with the option of alternates, then these questions really have no application. There were questions related to specifically ex parte communications, and whether or not alternates would step in in those circumstances, again, it relates to alternates, and whether or not solo site visits would qualify as an ex parte communication. So, ex parte communications, while we define them here, in, where is it? Section Three of Article Seven, Conduct of Members of the Commission, Section Three, ex parte communications are defined. An ex parte communication includes an oral or written communication, not on the public record, to which reasonable prior notice to all parties is not given.
If relevant to the merits of a commission proceeding.
Correct. So, you're, as virtue of being commissioners, you're not prevented from having communications with the public at large, you're not stopped from attending social gatherings, you're not stopped from just having a separate life in the commission, it doesn't mean that it just isolates you in a bubble. The issue here for site visits and ex parte communications is the actual communication that occurs. So, a site visit in and of itself would not be an ex parte communication, what is discussed during a site visit, and with whom, would. So, that would run into Brown Act violations, as well as ex parte communications. As I've explained to many of you before, you are a decision-maker, you're quasi-judicial body, you are effectively a judge, you are not a witness, so you don't bring evidence to yourself. And commissioners are not permitted to make decisions based on evidence that they alone have, that is not before the entire commission. So, if you are on a site visit, and there is an applicant there, property owner there, another commissioner there, discussing things with other commissioners is prohibited. Anything that would pertain to, anything that would lead to the development of deliberation, or an opinion on the particular item before you, is prohibited until you get to the actual hearing, and with other people in the public, like the applicant, and anybody who is associated with the applicant, or the public at large, you are not permitted to have communications with them that would do the same thing, that would address the matters before you. And so, way on site visits, your communications with anybody there would have to be very carefully handled, so that you don't form an opinion, appears if you're forming an opinion, discuss things that are not already in the record. So, for example, seventy-two hours prior to the meeting, you receive the agenda and all of the material, and then you decide to drive out to the site, you call the applicant, or whomever, you ask staff, hey, I'm going out to this place, do a site visit, and then you go to the site, your communication must be very careful, so that you don't discuss the items, so that you don't, I mean, you can stick to facts, you know, a packet that I've received yesterday says that the growth site is over here, can I go look at the growth site, or that this particular, you know, building area is over here, can we go look at that? Factual things that are already in the record are fine. Discussing those items, it's a very fine line, could get you into ex parte communications, where you're discussing that actual thing. So, my advice would be to avoid doing that. Don't have communications with parties, like applicants, or their representatives, when you're on site visits, because that could really get you very quickly into an area that you should probably avoid, as far as communications, because people naturally have questions, people naturally want to explain, it's easier to just not have the communication, so.
So, Nicole, if I can just interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
I find that that's nearly impossible in a small community. I am often spoken to about things in grocery stores, in the street, people call me up, and say things. My modus operandi has been to, when we discuss something, I bring in the information that I've observed. I'm a journalist, that's what I do. I state what I've learned. Does that work, as a, I mean, I just feel that it's impractical to not communicate at all.
Well, if you've heard something, somebody presents to you something, somebody, well, if someone tries to hand you paperwork, I would recommend not taking it, I would, that you let them know, you know, thank you for wanting to participate, here's how you can do that, and give them direction towards CDD, the website, things can be- Things can be posted on Granicus. Um, and calling in, writing in, sending that information to staff directly. And then staff can provide it to the whole commission.
Right.
If you find yourself in a position where somebody has come up and shared something with you and you have not engaged in conversation, like you don't say, oh, really, tell me more. The, or let me know what all of your problems are. I don't recommend doing that. If they come up and share something with you, then you can express that off, on the dais. Just before this meeting, I met a member of the pub-, a member of the public came up to me to try, to express to me, um, something about this item. This is what they shared with me. We had no further discussion. I pointed them to the, the places in which they can participate and told them that they could come in and communicate that, um, in public. And then you can't give an opinion about it in the sense that you can't say, I mean, I wouldn't recommend saying, well, here's, here's the discussion we had about it and the conclusion I came to, or here's what I think they meant because you aren't the one giving the testimony. They would have to be the one giving that, that evidence. So you can say, here's what I know because it was given to me by somebody. And then I shared with them, and then I told them how to share that with the whole commission at large. And so that's how I would handle that. But again, don't engage in the full conversation with the item. I'm not saying don't discuss things that, you know, are land use-related, but if it's related to an item, if it's something you know might be coming down the line or if it's related to a specific project, someone comes up to you in the grocery store and says, hey, I'm thinking of submitting this permit, um, here, to do this use thing. And, um, here's, here's what I, I'm thinking of doing. Do you think I should do that? You can point them to C, CDD. Just, I mean, I'm not, I'm not recommending you turn your back on everybody and shut them down every time they try to talk to you. But there are, there are definitely clear lines as far as items that, that should be avoided because of the nature of, of the role that you're in.
I think the way that you said, um, you know, you're a judge, not a witness.
Yeah.
That, I think that'll, out of all of this, that'll probably be the one thing that sticks in my brain. Just saying.
So, um, I think I answered whether or not the Board of Supervisors needs to approve the PC bylaws. They do not, not according to our code. Nearly all of these are, are alternate-related. And if we are not moving forward with alternates, I don't think that, that there are questions that should be addressed at this moment. So, and a number of the questions related to the reconsideration. And reconsideration is new. It's not currently in this particular, in the bylaws that are effect right now. The way it's been drafted for the version that was posted for today's meeting, parallels Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And, um, it does not, and like I said earlier, it does not allow for days beyond the day that the item was heard for reconsideration. Now, we can keep, we can keep this in here or we can rely on Rosenberg's Rules of Order, um, for that kind of action.
What purpose does this serve?
So, there was, it would serve a purpose if there is an item that, for example, defaulted to a denial because of a two-two vote. Or, um, potentially, but see, then, but it would run into the, the thing is, if it's the same day, it would be the same two sets of people that are voting on it, but and typically, the reconsideration is limited to a motion by a party, um, who voted for the item. So-
Nicole, if I could interrupt there? It says, "A motion to reconsider may be made only by a member who voted in the majority" of the original motion. What if the sentiment were, we, we, there's no majority in a two-two vote, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct. And the majority meaning that whatever the winning vote was, because the, the concept here is reconsideration is not just a second bite of the apple for anybody who lost the original vote. The goal of consideration would be for, if later in the, in the meeting, there was information that came to light or someone reconsidered their original vote.
So perhaps majority is not the right term?
Potentially.
I was confused by the reference to majority, yeah. But your, your explanation, um, certainly made sense, Nicole.
Yes. Um, and Robert, and Rosen-, excuse me, Rosenberg's Rules of Order does in fact allow for a vote to suspend the rules in relation to reconsideration, which allows for, um, voting beyond the timeframe. It, it's, it's a, to allow for the motion to be made at a later time. So for example, we tried to build that in, in that we wanted to, um, allow for at least the meeting of or the meeting following, which we couldn't do because of, of the vote triggering certain kinds of timelines and, um, the appeal period. And by the time you got to the next meeting, you'd be reconsidering something that had already been subject to the appeal period and it was confusing. But, um, and it was a difficult thing to do. It would have been easier if, um, it had been, uh, if your commission were to meet every week, for example, like the board, that would have been workable. But, um, Robert's Rules of Order, uh, um, excuse me, Rosenberg's Rules of Order does in fact allow, um, these rules to be suspended by a two-thirds majority. And that, um, and it allows a motion to be made at a later time. So in theory, it would, it would be, that thing we were trying to do is allowable under Robert's, uh, Rosenberg's Rules of Order. So you could then have two motions the following Tuesday after an item is heard, where you, someone could motion to suspend the rules. And then for, and then in a two-thirds vote, it were to be yes, then you could then apply the reconsideration there. So if you don't have something built in here that discusses reconsideration, then Robert, Rosenberg's Rules of Order may apply or would apply because it does in the beginning of the bylaws. That's deemed that anything not addressed in these bylaws is then governed by Rosenberg's Rules of Order. So, if, oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to give the commission a time check. We're getting close to when we'll need to let Jim go to lunch. Eight minutes. So that was part of the reason why it was put in here, because we took out the, the option for reconsideration to be extended to another date, if that makes sense.
It does, and it would still permit, even in the context of a four-four vote, reconsideration in that same meeting. Meaning if it's a two-two vote, it still results in a denial and somebody could then question that denial within the same timeframe and suspend the rules and have, and reconsider.
Well, if, if you address reconsideration within your own bylaws, then according to your bylaws, that would supersede Rosenberg's Rules of Order on reconsideration and it would not, I don't think we allow for suspension of rules here in this draft. So that would, that would remove the option at least for reconsideration where, where two weeks out of a, of a decision, the commission could suspend its own rules and then reconsider an item that's already been applied for appeal at the board. And that was the concern we had there. But, uh, and this particular reconsideration in the bylaw draft, otherwise, besides that suspension of rules, matches, uh, I think it matches Rosenberg's Rules of Order. As far as in that day, um-
So is it not superfluous? If we're adopting Rosenberg's rules, then is, we don't really need to include this, do we?
You would not necess-, you wouldn't have to. And there would be the option of, of two weeks out suspending the, a vote to suspend the rules and then, um, a vote. Because the way it's written now, anything not addressed under these bylaws is governed by, anything not governed by the bylaws is governed by Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Has no established rule of parliamentary practice. The chair shall be guided as nearly as possible by Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And we can add that language in that is specific, specifies that if it's not go-, if it's not addressed in these bylaws, that it would be governed by Rosenberg's rules.
I think that would be a good addition.
And that was the purpose there of adding, largely adding reconsideration to allow the commission. So some of these relate to a commission, some of these rules relate to a commission that is not a full commission. And some of these rules relate to, um, trying to be as near a full commission as possible. So the alternates obviously relate to trying to be always near as full a commission as possible to make decisions. Reconsideration generally applies when, um, members change their, their mind in the meeting, uh, ba-, you know, on a rule and they, so they bring a motion to reconsider the item because they have effectively, uh, someone has effectively changed their mind. Uh, or, or they hope someone has. And, um, circumstances where, um, circumstances were less ideal for a vote. And, um, so the commission, it would be better for the commission or the commission deems it's better to revisit an item that it may have already heard and made a decision on.
Okay, thank you.
I think so.
Two minutes.
Okay. So the step then would be, if we are not, um, the recommendation by staff then would not apply that's in the report attached because you are not, your commission has decided not to move forward with alternates. So then, um, I would request a continuance to December sixteenth in order for staff to bring you back, um, a draft bylaws that does not, that is amended with the changes you've, uh, your commission has recommended today and, um, with the removal of the option of alternates.
So move.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Jim, if you're still awake, can we please get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for all the information in, uh, getting us where we need to be. Sure.
One last item, thank you. We have been working in the department to catch up on reimbursement for the planning commissioners' travel expenses. So this includes both the mileage to attend the meeting as well as any mileage for site visits. A number of these, as, as we're working to catch up, a number of these are so outdated that I'm going to need to take them to the board for approval. But before I did that, um, I just wanted to, to let the commission know that I didn't see any claim for site visit mileage in your reimbursement request. So I wanted to offer the commission a chance, um, to work with our staff to get those mileage claims added, since I'm going to take it to the board anyway. I may as well, I'd like to be at as, I'd like to get all the reimbursement for you that, that is due. Um, and then also just to request that going forward, please note or please make sure that you add those mileage, um, claims onto that form so that we can get you everything that, uh, the code says is applicable. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. If any, nothing else needs to be said, then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.